Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting on this Monday, December the first, 2025, at seven oh two P. M. Ms. Derry, would you call the row force, please?
Sure. A.C. Brown.
Here.
Ralph Meeker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Roger Rainwater.
Here.
Steve Tedford.
Here.
Rod Powell.
Here.
And there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please stand, we'll begin our meeting tonight, led by Brother Ronnie Dill, 2025 Nike contributor of the year, followed by our pledge allegiance by Chief Brad Hoss.
Let's pray together. God, I want to thank you for tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to gather together, to discuss and to do business in this community. Lord, I thank you for this community. Thank you for just the blessing of living in a town that has great leadership, great servants. Lord, I thank you for that blessing in this time of year that we're reminded of how grateful and blessed we are. Lord, I pray for tonight's meeting. I pray that, Lord, you'll give wisdom and direction and guidance where it's needed. Again, we're just grateful for a community, for the freedom that we have in this country, for those that have provided it. And, Lord, again, we just say tonight, thank you. Ask you blessings on this meeting, and we pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Got a lot of politicians in the room. I don't know what to say about that, other than welcome. I do want to say a couple of things real quick before we get too far into it. I was notified by Mr. Wade Dunn just moments ago that former Mayor Judy Selkirk is in, is she in hospice, Wade, or just gone to the hospital, not doing well? Rehab, okay. 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 So need to remember her and that family in your prayers. Also, Lisa Moore, who is the director of the senior citizen here in town. Her husband passed away a few days ago, so be with, and he's also the father of David Moore, who's a street department employee. So keep those families in your prayers, if you would, please. At this time, I would ask the council to consider approving the minutes for the November third, 2025 regular city council meeting.
Make that motion.
Second. Thank you. Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yeah.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Recognizations and acknowledgements. I don't want to jinx the Bulldogs. I haven't yet, so, and I've announced it every time. So they just finished, there's regular season, well, not regular, playoff season here in Greenwood with seventy-seven home wins, right?
In a row.
Sir?
Seventy-seven in a row.
Seventy-seven in a row, thank you. So they're heading to, headed to Little Rock this Saturday, I believe, at six P. M.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, to play, I know who it is, Shadow Christians. So that'll be a good game. So anybody, all that can attend, and if you don't, you can listen to this guy here, and you can feel like you're right there. This is so big deal for me. I've got voices of Bulldogs in the room with me. I've got this guy up here, and then that one back there on the P. A. system, so we're blessed tonight for that. So, where am I?
I got sidetracked.
Yes, sir.
I also want to recognize the high school dance team.
Yes, I got it on his way.
One A through five A, game day, state championships.
Awesome.
Yep. Raise money to go to Nashville.
Okay. Donate to them directly?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's great. That's quite an accomplishment. Cheer team, I think, was second in state. Does that sound right?
They'll be competing this weekend.
Oh, why don't worry. Anyway.
Second place.
Okay.
So says Danielle. They're competing in hot springs.
We'll get you updated in a second. I think that's all I have as far as, anything else that you know of, Tim?
I don't know what you're talking about.
No, okay.
The parade coming up.
Parade's coming up, Monday, the eighth, Chamber of Commerce, Christmas Parade. Any information we need to know?
Just, we did not make a hard group of horses, so we were exiled over the top of the old people, and they all said they're not, they're not going to be good.
Really?
Because of the, the sea issues that they had.
Oh.
They're all being real talk. She called up any of them, none of that, ready, done, wait.
Okay. What about mules? Can we bring a mule if we have a mule?
Yeah, we could bring a mule. We do a couple of southerners. Bean fees, bean fees at five.
I wouldn't go on there, okay. Bean fees at five on square, okay? And regular annual stuff on square, K. C. and point at you, somebody singing, and maybe some bell ringing and stuff like that, so, okay. Good time to be had, Monday night, hopefully.
Second place at something.
Second place at something for the cheerleaders.
Yeah, we're second place, second place, they're playing for Southern here, they're just the competition.
Okay.
And the competition team takes it off our stage.
Okay, cool. All right. Ma'am? Yeah, cheer, good job. Committee reports, we have several in your packet and/or your tablet. If you don't have one, if anybody's missing, let us know. We'll get you that information. Get with Danielle. I know, I know Kenny's here tonight, so if you've got questions, Kenny?
No.
Kenny's here, he's back there. And again, of course, Lisa, as I mentioned before, Lisa's husband passed away a couple nights ago, so obviously she's not here. Citizen forum. We have several, four names that have signed up tonight, so it works like this. Everybody gets as much time as they want, except for Mr. Cox, and that's a little humor. I tried, I told him I was gonna, I told him I was gonna make fun of him. So what you do is you have, you come to the microphone, give us your name and address for, we have it on the record, and you have five minutes to give your, your spill to whatever you want to talk about to the council. So I have Jim Cox up first.
My name's Jim Cox, I live at twelve hundred and three little circle, and I've got my brother, now, over here, back there. What I'm planning on discussing is, I have a parcel on Stewart Lane, Stewart Court, you know where the gun range is, which you're all, you know, that area right there to the right, you know where our parents lived, and I gave you this so you can kind of follow along. The parcel, I'd like to talk about parcel A and then, of course, parcel B, is, that's owned by the city, and you can see the pink area is what the city owns. If you look as far as southeast corner, that was the original marking point of our parents' property.
He's got you up here, Jim, too. I don't know if you knew that or not.
Okay, that's good.
Hunter, Hunter did that. Oh, he moved. He's over here.
Okay, that doesn't take any of my time. Now, those are the two, those are the two parcels, the two parcels that I'll be talking about, and also have the burn pit, and the only thing I want to mention about that, I bragged really a bunch about how clean it was.
Shouldn't happen.
And then I went up here, and I noticed there were some concrete coals that were put in there. They weren't for stories, it looked like they were just being dumped up there, so if that could be addressed, I'd really appreciate it. And, you know, Hal and I, we're trying to wrap things up for our parents' estate. Our parents' age, being Barbara Stewart, I know most of you, perhaps all of you know them extremely well, and one thing that our mom was, she was definitely a progress thirty-one lady, and she paid the bills. And if you know our dad, he made the bills, and he blessed, made the blue. And if there was anything that needed to be done for the Greenwood School District or the Greenwood community, he was always willing to do that. And he and Lefty said, if all that area remains fenced, that that, that land could go back to you, you know? So that's what parcel, and I call it parcel B, so that's the one to the right, and that's the area that we're talking about right there. The, if you look at that, well, let me give you an idea. So when, when we were executing the will of our, of our parents, you know, we went down, I went down to courthouse, Hal had paid the taxes the previous year, so I went down this last walk, and I noticed that there was some, there was a little triangular piece, and, and those taxes have been paid since nineteen fifty-seven on that piece of property. Matter of fact, I was the one that paid the taxes this year, like I said, Hal took care of all the taxes for all the property the previous year. That second page, what I was gonna do is, that pink area, there are eleven parcels, according to the court, talking this on that. Okay, going back to the, to the March meeting, when I went down and I saw that property, and we paid the taxes and all that, and so I thought, is this really our property? So I did come down to the, to the city hall and visited with Tom, visited with the mayor, and pulled the information up, and it looked like it was our property. So I'm thinking, okay, you know, we're gonna go ahead and move along with it. Went to the title company, after a month, didn't, you know, didn't see anything, and she basically said, well, the only way you're gonna really find out is if you look at the minutes of the, of the city council. So, you know, that was, that was a month later on. So anyhow, long story short, when I started going through the paperwork again, it turned that page, it said warranty deed. Okay? There's the warranty deed, okay? Now, if you'll notice, again, knowing our dad, a handshake and someone's word was plenty for him, and he knew him, he knew that that was. And so you see a price of ten dollars, and then you'll see the date, February of nineteen ninety. Okay, that's, that's just, so, my, my next thing was, I came down and I talked with, well, actually, I talked with Doug first, and then we had a meeting, so Doug gave me a call back, and able to visit with Travis and Doug, and then Sonny was in there, and. Hunter, I know that, I know that, they didn't like any of Hunter's there. So I gave him this information, and we talked, and, you know, we even discussed adverse possession, which, as far as a government entity, that doesn't really matter. Now, this was, if that little triangular piece was, if it was a private individual that was right next to it, then as far as us owning that property by adverse possession, that, that would be a gift, you know, but this is a city. And Hunter also explained about the boundaries and the reason that was taken out and all that other stuff. Again, just showing you the, the warranty deed, and then that next, the next page over, if you'll notice, and false extension made down at the bottom, it says that that, that little piece, that tiny of a piece, was appraised for thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, previously, I almost say like a year ago, when I pulled information up, it was like twenty-four thousand. And by the way, I went to the courthouse, again, trying to, trying to establish who rightfully owned it. You can see that on the next page, it goes from two thousand fourteen all the way up to two thousand twenty-four, and you may wonder why it started at two thousand fourteen. Well, if you look at the next page, you see the HP Stewart tax down there, moving to two thousand thirteen. Okay, so that's why it doesn't show all those payments. And Hal walked along with a surveyor when they did all that stuff and understood all those points. How long time, Doug?
You're, you're about six minutes over. You're fine.
The next page basically just shows the acres, and what Hunter also showed was, it's actually, what, about one point one eight, one point eight acres, instead of three point, or instead of three acres. And so, you know, our desire is for us to be able to, you know, have, have the old property as much as we can. And, you know, so when I, when I talked with the, with the group that was meeting in October, they said, you know, that's up to the city council, and so that's why I'm here, so just for your consideration, I mean, we, we want to be able to hand that property down to our kids and grandkids, and I'll answer any questions, or I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Mayor, could we move this to agenda item one?
Sure.
Because this is obviously gonna take some time.
Sure.
They're probably requesting some action.
Yeah.
And I didn't want.
Started to do that anyway, but I was gonna wait and see.
Unless go on through citizens forum, and unless, I make a motion, we move him to new business.
Okay.
So that would be number three. We're just gonna shift everything else down.
And questions not required, because we can add things.
We had something down for Zach, Zach Johnson is not here. I don't see him. Is that correct? On, on item? Anybody see him, unless he's hiding, hiding?
I'm gonna handle it.
So we don't need to do his first?
No, no.
Because of him not being here, okay.
So, so we're just gonna go through and let this other, because there's.
So you, and at that time, you get thirty seconds. We didn't tell you that.
Now you got all the time.
You did good. Perfect, all right. Okay, oh, I'm sorry. I need back where I'm supposed to be here. Next on the list, Mr. Dunn, if you'll come up and.
I feel a little bit like I've had a family Thanksgiving, introducing myself. Anyway, I'm Wade Dunn. I live in Greenwood, live on Chisumville Road, and I'm running for state senate. I'm married to Susan. I think everybody here knows my wife. We've been married for four years. Forty-five years in business, forty-five years at Pepsi, trucking trucks, and the last four years I've been around. And as you know, many of you know, I've gone through second major store first, right, twenty years, twelve years out there, about thirty years. I'm a, I'm a conservative, I'm a Republican, and I believe I stand firm on, on conservative values, always a hundred percent pro-life, pro-second amendment, complete support of law enforcement. I want to lower taxes. When I ran three years ago, the most predominant thing I heard to do was from seniors, was I never owned a home. I could pay my house off, but I always had to pay property taxes. And, you know, if you read the constitution, I think it's important, maybe fourteen, maybe fifteen, fourteen, maybe, since we need to be secure in our property. And for those seniors who have lived in American Green, paid taxes on, paid the property off, they're just one financial setback from losing that property, or maybe a bad adjustment from the citizens. So I want to, I want to lower the taxes to those seniors and veterans, cut the property tax to fully, completely. If I can't do it completely, I want to do it fifty percent current. Now, in order to do that, we've got to cut costs. In business, I was always a very cost-focused business person, and the example I ought to give is, you know, if you just continue spending the same time year on year on year, without ever saying, let's just forget everything, you know, rebuild this business for around two, as far as possible. At Pepsi, we've started zero waste voting, I mean, if you know, for zero waste voting, yes. So that's what I want to take to Little Rock, for our themselves. Some, well, not opponents, not persons here tonight, wants to save wages, wants to cut funding from schools, well, that's, that's a tactic, because we don't have choice. School funding is constitutional, like that, so school funding cannot be affected by that. We just have to, and currently, the way it works in Greenwood, the prime example, which is, I talked today, Greenwood, I think, their funding comes from property taxes, and that fifty cents made up by state. So in this scenario, that, you know, what, one or two percent of the debt from property taxes would just have to be made up by state. And I, I, I want to do that by saving money, and something similar to what they did with Doug, is go back and look to both, and working with that. The Franklin County prison is probably the biggest one issue in this election. I'm adamantly opposed to that. There is, the way they've invited was wrong, and I appreciate this city council and your action that you took early on. You know, Gary Stubblefield, who was your friend, I talked to him at the air, too, after the announcement, he said they called me at four o'clock, the evening before they made the public. And that's just not the way to operate in urban, you know? We don't come in at the dark night and, you know, something like that. There's infrastructure issues, water is unsolvable at this point. So I want to do that, I want to cover regulations, I, you know, in terms of small business and tax vote, I definitely try to operate a business. And to be honest, Arkansas, Arkansas government does not use a criminal for, for business, and I want to take that experience and challenge those laws and challenge new laws and regulations to make it easier for businesses to operate. And I will say, the last thing I will say is, I am the unhanding interest that's endorsed by the Stubblefield family. If not for Amber Solomon, who is Gary's daughter, and Gary's wife, I would not be in this race. They called me and said, Wade, we want you to run, because we think you're the only one that will carry out what they have to do with their, and my lives, is the reason I'm here. And I'm, I'm very excited to go do that. I know that whoever wins this election has some very good shoes to build, and I just want to introduce myself, and I'll answer your questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Next on the list is Ms. Buckley.
Thank you all so much for looking tomorrow, it's me, the time tonight, my name's Ashley Buckley, and I'm currently running for Sebastian County Circuit Court, Division Five. I grew up in this area, a big part of my childhood was being a member of my family and the Greenwood Roundup Club, and horses were a big part of my life and still are. But I grew up at the fairgrounds here and riding the parade with the Green Bay Dana, and then I went on to be at Old Fort A. C. D. as well, and then at law school. So I've been practicing law going on sixteen years. After law school, I was a Sebastian County Deputy Prosecutor, and I worked in the chief's office for several years, and the cases that I really focused on are credit against children, child abuse, domestic violence, and those were a big part of the reasons that I tried. I tried numerous jury trials in those cases, and they're really important to me, and have a lot of experience in court trying those cases. I also worked for a big law firm in Memphis, right after law school, so I had jury trial experience in federal courts there as well, representing large Fortune five hundred companies, trucking companies. And then ultimately, after I left the prosecutor's office to go be an assistant U. S. attorney, and I did that, and I was based in Fort Smith, and we covered the whole western side of the state, but a big part of my work was, I worked in the Project Safe Childhood Division, and so my cases were focused, again, on child abuse, child exploitation, human trafficking, things like that. And actually, Greenwood P. D. was a big part of my work, and I did a lot of work with them, and we had someone from Greenwood P. D. on our internet crime specialist, open task force, and that combined Homeland, Department of Homeland Security, F. B. I., who works with Forestry P. D. and Greenwood P. D., and actually Greenwood P. D. helped a lot with our, the technology side of, of our work and getting our search warrants done, and so I've had a lot of experience doing that, tried cases, and I actually argued appeals on behalf of the United States, and so I have stood just very similar to this before the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is just one step below the United States Supreme Court, and so I've argued cases before the Eighth Circuit breached them, and one case in particular that I'm really proud of, went on to really set law that made requirements for sex offenders traveling interstate and punishments for them, a lot harsher, and so I'm really proud of that result. And then after that, I started a family, and so traveling so much to be an assistant U. S. attorney became difficult, so I went into practice with my husband. And so we've been practicing law together, our offices in downtown Fort Smith, we've been practicing for, together going on ten years, and we do jury trials together, we tried a wrongful death case and secured a multimillion dollar verdict, and we've, we've done all sorts of cases from breach of contract, construction, and so the position I'm running for is circuit court, Division Five, it's half criminal and half civil, and that's where you have your jury trials in circuit court, and it's felony cases, so I have the criminal experience, and I have the civil experience, and I think is really important for that. My husband and I, we live not too far from here, we live in Bonanza, just right off the Fair Hall Road, and so, so we have with our, we live there with our two sons. My mother had worked at the Greenwood Courthouse for many years in the assessor's office, and she's been with the assessor for, gosh, going on twenty years here, so my family is really rooted here in this community, and I just, I think it's so important, the work that circuit court does. And most people think that they'll never, you know, end up or intersect with circuit court at some point, but I've told a lot of people, if you drive a car, or you own a business, you patron a business, you enter a contract, there are so many different ways that you might end up, you know, in circuit court, and I promise you, anybody who has a case there and never expected it to, and so, that's why I think the work that is done there is so important, and it's really important, I think, to get it right, and so that's a big part of why I'm running, is we really need really good careful, thoughtful diligence and work that's being done in circuit court, and that's something that I want to bring to it. I was really honored, this last past week, I was endorsed by the Gun Owners of Arkansas, and so I was able to share that. And, you know, so I'm, I'm excited. My election is nonpartisan, and so the general election's on March there. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a statement, I'm a former dandy as well, so, that's cool.
I have a question. Do you still have a horse?
I do.
On behalf of the chamber, I apologize, you can't ride in the parade.
Well, my horse is really, really old.
Oh, okay.
It would make it anyway.
Okay. Anything from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you. Ms. Smith, you're up.
Hey, everyone, my name is Stacy Smith. I am a longtime resident here in Greenwood, in fact, I've lived in the same house, I've been channel eight for thirty years, like I just feel like I'm on vacation every single day. Professionally, I worked at Golden Living for eighteen years, I did state eldercare issues, I did two decades of Internet state houses in the south, and, you know, you get to learn a lot about how, how to make the sausage, to be honest, and you get to learn about the goods in the communities and, and how to improve them, and, and just how to, how to get back into those communities that, that we served for, for all those years, and I'm, I'm proud of that knowledge, I'm proud of those, those lessons. Golden Living shut down, and Tim and I had, I think we had five teenagers at home, and we absolutely did not want to move, and we were lucky enough to land a new role at the gas company here in Fort Smith, Arkansas Oklahoma Gas, you know, they've operated for seventy-five years. There, I get to do government affairs work along with more community engagement, and I have a team that goes out to six states that gives back to communities in a variety of ways, through sponsorships and charitable giving and volunteer efforts. It's, it's really truly a great organization where you get to work side by side with these hardworking tradespeople, and as far as advocacy, I've learned so much about environmental and just new ways, new exciting ways, renewable gas, and that landfill here in Fort Smith is what kept us going in twenty twenty-one for winter fury, and I just, I can't believe that that much gas came out of that landfill. So it's a very exciting time to be in the natural gas business, I assure you. I'm running because I too knew Gary Stubblefield, he supported us here in Greenwood very, a lot, many, many times. One of the things I did on a civic level and something I was very passionate about is I worked at the city's recycle center on those, one Saturday once a month for four hours, I coordinated a group called Team Green, where I, I got the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts and a lot of the civic organizations in the schools together, the cheerleaders, the, you name it, the Beta Club, Ms. Skaggs was one of my greatest, you know, partners in getting those kids out there, and we, we worked the recycle center, and oftentimes I would ask for state lawmakers to come out and join us and, and be there for the kids, so Stubblefield came out, we had Senator Bruce Holland at the time, I'm taking my, I'm aging myself, we had Crawford came over, she was our representative at the time, and these kids got to engage with lawmakers and, and learn about giving back to the community. We worked numerous hours out there, and I'm, I'm super proud, and I, I truly, truly enjoyed it until you have hired a person now, which is great, and Tim and I still go there. Lastly, Tim and I raised three Eagle Scouts. We worked, um, numerous hours out there and I'm, I'm super proud and I, I truly, truly, um, enjoyed it until you have hired a person now, um, which is great and Tim and I still go there. Uh, lastly, uh, Tim and I raised, um, three Eagle Scouts, um, with some others on the, on, on the, um, commission up here. Uh, we are super proud of our, our boys, they gave back to the parks and, and recreations. And, um, uh, looking at that map there, I think we could put in some trails around that Greenwood Lake. We're, we're very, very proud of that. And, and we had those areas as a family. So, um, I feel that, uh, the River Valley is, is a great place to, to live. And I want to, um, have my grandchildren experience what my kids experienced. And, uh, I feel that with my knowledge of how laws, uh, and, and, you know, all of the government work that I've done, I, I would be a good fit in replacing, um, Mr. Steppenfield. I do want to add that our election got turned up. I've been door knocking like a fool and nobody knows the election is January sixth. It's in about a month and it's going to be, we're the only thing on the ballot. So let everyone know, um, January sixth, there is an election and I would appreciate your help. Any questions?
Counsel, thank you very much, appreciate you, thank you. Thank you all for coming tonight and giving your time to us and, and answering questions and being, uh, introducing yourselves. So thank you so much. Uh, I skipped a little something a while ago I need to do real quick. Mr. Purvis, would you come up for just a second for me, please? I don't, this is not my job to do this, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Well, I guess it is, it is my job. So recently there was the best river valley, best of the best in the River Valley event in Fort Smith. If you're familiar with that, uh, it's a great event, wonderful dinner. Bob was not there to, uh, get this, so I'm gonna present it to you, sir, and get a picture, uh, where you at? Here we go, Chief, Chief Hoffman, our photographer tonight. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm gonna present myself one. Charlotte, why don't you come up and I'll, you and I will present, I'll present it to you.
Okay.
Uh, it, it actually says best of the best winner Greenwood place to live. It doesn't say the best place to live, it just says place to live, so we'll take credit. Hold your call, please. Anything to get the picture, I see. Okay, so we will move on and next on the agenda, oh, is financial report. You're standing between Jim Cox and us, so Jim, however you want to handle that.
How do I follow that?
How do you follow that?
Well, there's numbers. So what I want to first start out to show you is the key financial data. If you'll notice, the city sales and use tax revenue dropped in the same period. We had a negative fourteen point three eight percent change negatively, obviously, from, uh, the collections of the distribution that we had in the month of November to the previous month of November. The cumulative growth is now down to negative five point oh two percent, which against budget is we're down eight percent. The county sales tax, however, was up three point three five percent from the same period of November. Cumulative growth, twenty-five or twenty-four is now positive, slightly just barely over zero. We've suddenly been zero, it was a neutral or we've mostly no growth and we're actually right at it. So we've achieved, if that holds for one more month, uh, we'll end the year with what we basically said we were in the budget and operating. As far as the advertising and promotion, this, these numbers are adjusted from what you have in your tablets from the report that was sent out. Cause we included the, uh, receipts that came in from Friday through today. Uh, we had, because of this early cutoff, we can't really close the books for November until we get through the actual, um, the change period, which is usually the first week of November. I mean, of December in this case. So we updated this to reflect a, the actual same period change from November to November of last year. Thirty-one point nine three percent decline. That puts our cumulative AP tax growth at negative five point four nine or five and a half percent. And our above budget of tax growth is a negative nine, which is a much better four percent gain. So that's a trend that we've been seeing all year long. There was three months when there was some collective, you'll see it when I go through the rest of the, there was some collective, uh, arrears payments that supported it a little bit for a, a three-month period where we had some positive gains. However, most of this is a, we're seeing as a trend as of the line in the actual, uh, AMP collections of the year. As far as the next is concerned, this is your seventeen through twenty-five historical. And this is where the five point oh two percent falls out. We're at three million two, um, against last year's three million four. Uh, we're five point, five point zero two percent down, fourteen point three eight percent from here. And I'll show you the other good news. This is all the cities, city sales and use tax for the month of November's distribution. And two of us, Huntington and us, were the only two that experienced a negative, uh, percent change. Everybody else was up. That usually tends to have me drive towards a rebate in order to say that's what's causing this. And I will show you that we did experience the rebates. Uh, another month of a large rebate that if you add up the three months in a row and compare against the two months that there was the rebates from the June, uh, fiscal year-end submissions, you're only about six hundred dollars off. So I kind of anticipated this to be about eighty-five hundred dollars and ended up being ninety-nine. However, when you take that into consideration along with the audit adjustments, which was nil, it was basically two dollars forty cents, no big deal. As far as that's concerned, and you look at what it does, by looking at the amount that was distributed in November of twenty-five, comparing that to November of twenty-four's distribution, that's your fourteen point three eight percent taking no consideration for the, um, add-back of the rebate. So when you neutralize the rebate in the audit, you come back to the collected tax, that was an amount that could have been distributed had there not been a rebate. And that still is a thirteen point two one percent decrease. So that's, that's an issue. That, that parlay's back to the taxable sales drop of about two point seven million dollars between September of twenty-five and September of twenty-four's collections or actual retail sales. That's your thirteen point two one percent, because we're adding back the impact of the rebates for both twenty-four and twenty-five. Kind of neutralizing it. Now, when you look at the whole year, which is this bottom number, this would be through November, the amount of distributed city sales and use tax on a cash basis was down before rebate and audit, four point eight seven percent for the years so far. And that'd be, that's different because it includes the bond, it includes the twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent collection on a quarter of once a percent that we taxed for the bond. So all, this is all in. But when you look at the collected tax after the rebate adjustment, you're, we're still two point six four percent down for the year. And that's about five point three million in taxable sales. And that negates the impact of the rebate. So there's, uh, there's something to be said about where the taxpayers' dollars were going in the month of, uh, September, which is your November distribution. Now, when you go look at the county sales tax, we were up three point three five percent. That's where this, uh, impact became positive first time this entire year. We are now back into the positive on the county sales tax. That side does not, you know, we share in general like with all the other, uh, cities within the county, as well as the county itself. So when you look at that, you're basically seeing that there's no rebates and no audits to have to worry about in this side of the, of the equation. So let's look at the combined sales, both city and county, we're down two point nine percent. So there was an uptick in the actual combined sales tax of the loss of the amount that we're down for the year. We've got five point six million against five point eight million of pre-issued due to the January to November period. That's cumulative. Alright, so that's the bad news there. Let's look at the advertising and promotion. This is the amount that was collected so far through November. This does include all the receipts that came in today. So that is why this has been adjusted, it was over forty percent. Thirty-one point nine three and that's negative five point, five and a half percent, basically, down. And you see it's all negative. So when you look at the individual November, if you see November took a huge swing up and then a huge swing down. And there's a lot of collections that occurred for past amounts that were due in the month of, uh, November twenty-four. And then you would get sixteen for twenty-five in November. And then you see what it's doing on an annual year-to-date basis. You want to know what the projection is? In order for them to hit their four percent growth, they would have to have the centrist collection of that, which for the month we're currently in, come in at thirty-seven thousand, the average that we've had for ten months was nineteen. For the remaining two months was seventeen, that number's gotta change because November's not in there yet. So this average collection needed to break even in order to come up with this, um, amount that we had last year. In order to get to the two thirty-six, before you take into consideration November's numbers, would have had to spend thirty-seven thousand dollars. It's just not happening. As far as the cash flow is concerned, for the city, this is the cash beginning balance of seventeen million. This is all in for the city. We had a net decrease for the month of November of fifty-three thousand. The year-to-date decrease in cash was almost four million. And most of that was due to the amount of spending that was done on the water sewer side for a lot of their major projects that they have going on. The current fund balance for the end of November is, uh, at the time we did this report, is the twenty-fifth of November, thirteen million eighty-eight thousand. That is a decrease in fund balance of twenty-three point two one percent. Don't get alarmed because you actually approved a budget that had a decrease in this fund balance of sixty-seven point oh four percent. So we're one month in left to go and we're well short of the sixty-seven percent that we had participated, anticipated rather being our production in cash. If you look at the capital expenditures, the last thing that we normally look at in this report is the capital improvements for the city. Spend was seven point five million on a fifteen point eight million dollar budget, that's forty-seven point four two percent. That's actually pretty good compared to the previous years at this time. Uh, normally we're below that number. As far as the water sewer is concerned, they are at four point five million through a ten point nine million dollar budget. That's forty-one point three eight percent. They will, based on some of the invoicing that we currently have coming in now for the month of December, our first payout in December should put them above fifty percent. So they will actually hit that fifty percent mark which they promised they would do. Um, as far as the city capital spend is concerned, this is everything but water sewer. Their budget was up to almost five million, they spent three, they're sixty point eight percent. So these two make up this fifteen million dollar budget. And the three and the four is at seventy-five. So there's, it broke out between the city, ex, uh, sewer and water sewer and what the city did. And, uh, that's what we'll do until we go through the other reports.
Thank you, Tom. Spend your money in Greenwood, Arkansas. We need, we need sales tax revenue.
You know.
Shop, shop local.
While we've got some state people here that are running for state jobs, you can see the construction rebates are killing us. Now, the Little Rock guys kept their money, took it away from us. You know, he used to be a tenant of the Republican Party for local control. That would be really, really nice if the Republican Party could get back to that tenant, because I know both y'all are running as Republicans. So that's, that's a killer, those construction rebates. We're putting up with all the disaster and all the problems and they're jerking all the money back. But not the state guys, not Little Rock. They're living large off the money that we collect. And we're, we're dealing with the, we're dealing with the bad stuff. So.
I was reading an article just recently that Louisiana and Texas both participate in the rebate, in the, uh, the rebates. Arkansas is one of the few states in this area that does not participate. And so we're, the, the counties and local municipalities are paying all of this rebate. And, and it makes it really tough to figure out when the sales tax are coming in and when those rebates are gonna hit. And it, it's, it's not just a, a drop in sales tax, it's also making it very unpredictable for us to plan. So it's really a burden.
It's tough. Okay, anything else from counsel? Thank you.
I probably shouldn't say anymore.
Uh, do what?
I probably shouldn't say.
No, hey, it's time to say it, time to say it. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Uh, agenda additions, we do have two, if the counsel would allow these. We got number eight, uh, which is an u- update on I forty-nine. We have a little short video we want to show you later. I think Sonny's gonna kind of initiate that for us here in a little while. And, uh, and then number nine is a budget extension resolution, finance. Everybody's okay with those two?
We have also, uh, in planning, we have an ordinance put on there for permit fee schedule.
Okay.
You get that one?
That's ten, ten or?
Ten.
Ten?
Yes.
And then, of course, eleven is Jim Cox's property issue.
No, I was wanting that moved.
Yeah, but that's, that's eleven.
Yeah, eleven up the top. You have to stay for four hours, what we're trying to do.
It's already on there.
Okay.
Cox Stewart is number one.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, uh, moving on, so number one is, yes, sir, you're up. Uh, I think you've said, I mean, you say anything more you need to say. I think counsel, uh, this is Rog's idea, so I'm gonna skip you. Yeah, 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 it, what questions and or what, what would you like? My, my question would be, just not to kind of get things going, how, what would you like to see us do about this for you or with you? I think is the.
We'd like to, we'd like to, uh, keep the property.
Right, okay.
I mean, that, that's our number one goal.
Okay.
But again, you know, we understand that the circumstances and just one, the, the counsel that here, where we're coming from.
Sure.
I said, uh, I, I went through all kinds of stuff trying to figure out, is, is that one piece our property? And everywhere I turned, it was, and then, then I found the warranty. And I mean, my first thought was, the city needs to know about this. Because what we're trying to do is ramp up this state and we're not leaving sign paper last month on this state.
So.
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about, okay.
If I may, just to clarify for the counsel's purpose, if I'm understanding correctly, your, you or your family has been paying the taxes on that one point seven eight acres since nineteen ninety when it was actually deeded to the city, is that correct?
Well, from, from the time they had the property, perhaps nineteen fifty-seven. So all this time, the nineteen ninety.
But the nineteen ninety deed was from your parents to the city.
Exactly.
And the reason for that was because we need a buffer around the lake. But you're, you or your family continued to pay the taxes on that all these years, the last thirty-five or thirty-five?
Well, Hal did, and you only paid one. You said it yourself.
I'm listening to the lawyer.
I just had to make that point, I just, I didn't know if everybody heard that or not.
I, I just didn't know if everybody understood what, uh.
Yeah, that was the big question is, hey, and I said, our mom, she paid all the taxes and, and continued without even asking any questions. And then, uh, again, we, we pay them throughout.
So we're talking about the triangle, right?
Yes.
And, and they've been paying taxes since nineteen fifty-seven.
That's correct.
But at some point, Halton's, he, it become the city's. But you continue to pay sales, sales tax, I mean, per, real estate tax. Now, what's the three point four acres?
Okay, that, that's the, that's the area that's, that's been fenced since, I know, at least the middle sixties. And it's about, it's about twenty feet from that road that goes down to the gun range. And so, I mean, we, you know, again, adverse possession, I mean, it doesn't have any weight as far as government, government stuff.
Is, is that y'all's or the city's?
Well, it used to be ours.
So it belongs to the city right now?
Yes.
Clearly?
According to all the documents we sent.
So that clearly belongs to the city. So the, but the one point seven, the triangle. You, you would like to do a swap and clear it all up? So if a swap, so if a swap was made, w- we have to maintain that three hundred feet. So we get that three hundred feet back.
Right.
Correct.
And then also, there's, the dam is right there. At some point, we're prob, most likely gonna need that area for construction. Unless y'all have looked at the dam different than the way I've looked at it.
Triangle area.
I'm talking about the triangle.
Yes.
That would be where you'd probably bring in some construction stuff. So if we don't. So if we don't deal with it now, we'll be dealing with it later. Uh, and then it may be a lot more costly, like everything's more costly for us, the way we procrastinate. So.
I mean, it's okay for a swap, I mean, that, that's really the ideal kind of guideline. Because again, the buffer, the way Hunter was explaining, there's.
Three.
That's what the, the blue lines, uh, portray on the screen, is a three hundred foot buffer from a contour line around the lake.
So which, which line represents the three hundred foot?
The blue, the blue.
The whole blue.
The whole.
The whole blue.
The whole blue.
Yeah, that's three hundred.
Because it's from the shoreline technically, wherever that shoreline happens to be, I guess, it's kind of weird.
The, the numbers worked out at the, like I said, the nearest contour elevation mark.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're, could be above current lake level.
So the triangle clearly lies completely within the three hundred. Oh, and the other one lies outside the three hundred foot.
And I, I think it's also important for the council to understand that, I believe that they feel like that was theirs all this time, and they've been maintaining that and holding it out as theirs. Because we didn't know about the deed from the nineties, correct?
Right.
Looks like a fair swap to me.
Yep. That's what we kind of talked about briefly in our meeting, or one of both of those meetings and.
If it's possible, I mean, that's.
I was just curious, what do the purple lines represent?
Those are existing property boundaries.
Okay.
Now, is this something you're looking to develop?
We like the deer that's gone.
Okay, I'm just, just curious.
Well, if all you're looking for is a motion, I'll make a motion that we get the paperwork started and swapping these two pieces of property.
I was thinking it.
And the motion is safe.
And, and this doesn't impact our, or the buffer?
It actually brings us into compliance.
It fixes it, that we're, we're not in compliance at all right now.
Okay.
Is that?
That, that's one.
Is that?
And there's no money involved, right?
No money.
Miss, yes, sir, Mitch Purvis? Go ahead and sideboard.
Mr. Cox had a question, with, with this property swap, just saying.
Of record, yes.
Yes.
But they've been paying, they've been paying.
So we're wanting to.
I think, I think it's more about relinquishing, if you will.
They would quit claim us. They would, they would quit claim us. They would quit claim us the triangle piece, we would deed them the other piece.
Although the triangle piece is in our name, they could have a claim to it because they've possessed it and been paying the taxes on it for the last thirty-five years.
Which the city would be exempted from, so there's a, another.
The only hangup there is, is that it was our property to be in it. Now, what this adverse possession thing is, it's, it's mainly talking about people that are trying to take over parks and take over things that was previously owned by city government. Am I right?
Sure.
Right enough.
I'm just kind of saying, the city probably wouldn't have paid those taxes because we're exempt from property taxes.
But they shouldn't have paid them either.
Right, right. So there's an amount of money there that really shouldn't have ever gone to the county.
The county does.
Oh.
The county does.
Yeah.
You're just saying, nobody should have been paying taxes.
Yes, right.
The city wouldn't have had to pay.
Right, so that's over four thousand.
So if you want to, if you want to go and pay us what you paid, you like the motion on the floor? I don't, I don't want to muddy it for you, Mr. Cox, Dr. Cox, sorry. I forget that sometimes. Uh, okay, so we do have a motion to say, I mean, open discussion for sure.
Well, I just had one question.
Yes, sir.
Um, that three point four acres, I mean, that's right next to the gun range, I mean, that's not going to be adverse to you.
Okay.
That property, uh, right there, the, the fence line is at least twenty feet from that road that goes down. So it, it would not affect anything that the city or the, the placement are doing at all.
Where's the burn pile?
On above.
See that clear right above?
Yes, sir.
Three point, that's.
Okay, not in either one of these, for some reason I had it in the corner of that, okay.
You see, this, this butts up the house property, this part of the.
But that, but the burn pile is on, or burns area?
It's Greenwood area.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's the, that pink.
Okay.
It's in that pink area.
Okay.
You don't want to.
I, I. I love your drawing.
Rod's got a.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Question, you briefly mentioned some trash, right there by the gun range?
Tiles or something.
It's the burn pile.
It's the, it's a burn pit, and what somebody's done, they've dumped the, uh, concrete culverts. And I roll up today, kind of look at it, it looks like they've been pushed to the various side or the front. You know, I mean, you can't see it unless you drive up in there. That's a concern, you know, because if people know, we're going to start dumping stuff there.
We're, we're better neighbors than that.
Are they, are they broken, or are they just look like?
Some were, some weren't. And, and then I did notice, uh, previous time I went up there, there was, uh, a flat concrete piece, and it looks like that has been moved. So that, that part's. I mean, I, I was writing to that committee that I spoke with in October, I mean, the first time I went up there, it was, I thought, wow, this is a building site. I mean, it was that clean, and then, then we saw another.
If you, uh, if that doesn't get cleaned up in the next few weeks, if you'll send me pictures, the next council meeting, I'm going to put them right up here. And we're going to have a deeper conversation about being better neighbors. So if Doug leaves town for two weeks and the assistant mayor becomes mayor, she'll have it cleaned up in twenty-four hours, guaranteed.
Here we go.
Well, we appreciate, I just.
We didn't know about it until you just said it. When I say we, I had no idea until you just told me.
I know that.
So we'll get it. That's, that would be a great idea. The only one that's not here tonight is the person, it's probably his department that took it up there.
Well, no, nobody, nobody knew about it.
Yeah, okay, okay.
From the city council on.
There's no question we'll get cleaned up.
Well, I knew you would.
If it doesn't, send me pictures, and they're going to be up here next meeting, and we'll have a lot deeper conversation.
But thank you for the motions being.
Oh, we hadn't voted yet.
The, the other question is, how, how will the deed read?
Mr. Plummer?
I'm sorry.
He's asking how the deed would read.
Uh, well.
Could you just put it in Hal Virginia's name?
Sure.
Because anyway, we wouldn't have to go through the.
Whatever you guys prefer, fine.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to.
Then, if it's mo, all of you, then you gotta start over, is that what you're trying to do, mind?
Internal fighting.
Yeah, exactly.
No, there's no internal fighting, we, we, really, we had to sign some papers this last Monday because of a mess up and some paperwork years ago.
We can wait later and figure out whatever you guys need.
That's, that's one.
So if.
So to be clear, it's a quitclaim on the one point seven acres piece, and a re-deed or deed over the three point four acres.
Yes.
Okay, that's the swap.
And do they have a, a means of getting refunded for, I mean, paying all those taxes? Is that, okay, that's one thing. All right.
It'd be a county deal.
That's a cost to the city.
It wouldn't be a cost to us, it'd be the county.
Yeah, it's county.
So feel free to pursue. We see to have a blank check over there.
They shouldn't have been, if it's in our name, we don't pay those taxes, and you shouldn't have, I mean, that's a.
A family shouldn't have.
That's a.
Yeah.
If you click on the tax record for that one point seven acres, it depicts it as three point two acres, three point three acres.
Oh, it's got the wrong.
All the county has done is swapped parcel numbers and showed ownership on incorrect parcels based on bad language and deeds originally. So they've been paying taxes on three point two, three point three acres, which is what they were supposed to have owned originally. It's just showing incorrect ownership.
So they would have paid taxes.
They would have been paying taxes and.
On, on something, okay.
I can, I understand that.
Yeah, we're planning on keeping him. He was deemed employee of the month this morning, so. Year, sorry.
All right, well, do we need to take that?
Yeah, we need to, we need to vote.
You can go ahead and call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Terry, Mr. Meeker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Do you know?
Thank you, sir. Oh, the whole thing?
I'm sure you could contact Mr. Plummer for the rest of it.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Dunn, thank you all. Tell we did it for Janet.
That's a fact.
Tom, will you check that microphone?
In Virginia.
We did it for Janet, for Janet in Virginia. We did it for Virginia and Janet. Do you hear that, Hal? We did it for Virginia and Janet.
I didn't think it was on. Yeah, this one time.
Despite. Despite these tickets.
And yours wasn't on either of them. You don't have?
Okay. Uh, we are, do you want to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we should do it.
Okay, regular time, okay, so. Number one on unfinished business is a city attorney resolution adopting citywide AI policy, tabled from previous meeting.
So this was tabled from last month, uh, Mr. Powell has, or excuse me, Mr. Meeker had some suggestions, I think we addressed those. If you look in section five, uh, we changed that to read, only AI tools authorized by the city's IT committee may be used for city business. And, um, that organization that we use as a IT consultant or writer, um, they are part of that committee.
Yes.
And I believe we've already reached out to them to see what we could and couldn't on use already. Um, but that was really the only change besides the strike in section ten where we changed department to committee, is that correct?
Yes. Oh, and one little change on a third page.
Yeah, the last page, we, uh, added, uh, that it would be incorporated into the city's personnel policy handbook as well.
Yes, and we're going to strike that ordinance and put resolution there, right before that sent.
Replace ordinance with resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, it just says ordinance, it's just typo.
I make a motion, may I approve this resolution?
Thank it.
Have a motion in a second to approve.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meeker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, number two, city attorney repeal, replace ordinance, number twenty-three dash seventeen, private club permitting on the second reading. Now, as I understand it, this is just to get us in compliance with the, uh, state statutes?
That's correct, so we originally had, uh, our, uh, tax levy would be ten percent on beer and then, beer and wine, excuse me, and then fourteen percent on mixed drinks. Um, according to state statute, we can only levy half of what the state levies, so we reduced that to five and seven percent. I believe we had, Charlotte, we had the application for.
Yes, we added, we incorporated it, yeah.
Application, uh, as exhibit A, so anybody that wants to apply, this, this, uh, application is on file as exhibit A for this ordinance.
Yeah, before it was adopted by resolution, and it was way out there, separate from the ordinance, it was really hard to kind of find.
More of a housekeeping.
Yes.
Okay, so question, the state now says that a for-profit may have the right of a, uh, what is the term I'm looking for?
Private club.
Private club. Now, is this something that, I mean, this is, this is a state. Is it requiring us to do that? Or can the city be more restrictive and say, we don't want a private entity to have the same ability as a?
No, so it's, it's, we can't be more restrictive, um. Excuse me, we could be more.
Be less restrictive, we can be more restrictive.
We could be more restrictive, but the state has opened it up to, um, any for-profit individual, you know, corporation LLC or whatever to be able to apply. Basically, what they did away with was the requirement to have the nonprofit organization.
The five oh one C three has been eliminated, eliminated.
Been eliminated, but that's not addressed with this ordinance in any way.
Okay, so. Everything in here still applies to procedures and your taxation, everything is still neatly wound up.
Correct. Okay, so with the ordinance as it is, are we saying that a for-profit can operate with alcohol inside the city limits in Greenwood?
By considering this ordinance? Uh, this ordinance doesn't address that point, correct?
But do we need to address that at some point in here?
It's not a state law anymore, so we wouldn't have put them in here.
State law says a nonprofit is not necessary anymore.
You asked, is that what you're talking about, the nonprofit attestation?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that, that today, we don't allow the sale of alcohol inside the city limits, is that correct?
Unless you buy a private club license.
Okay, now they're eliminating the, so, so is that still the case in Greenwood, or has that changed as a result of the state's change? That's what I want to clarify.
Everything's pretty much the same you said, but if you recall in La Fiest, I don't know if you were even up here when that went down.
I, I've heard, that's, and that's why I'm asking.
They had LLC that they kind of pulled out of the sky, and that was kind of a drawback for some folks.
Yeah.
And so they don't have to have that anymore.
They have to have a made up.
By the way, it doesn't, we're not, even no matter what you pass, is not saying they can sell it, means they can apply.
Yeah.
To the ABC. It gives permission to said profit organization to apply to the ABC.
Once the council approves that.
Once the council approves that.
The ABC then sees the council's.
This is how you apply, this is what they need to get the ordinance to go before the ABC. Because the only thing you can have in a dry county is a private club, and we're still a dry county.
Okay.
So the only thing, your only option is a private club, but you can be a restaurant and come apply. But before, you used to have, have a five oh one C three, which could have been, and there's one lawyer in Little Rock that had these all prepackaged up, and it was all a sham, and that way you keep the two below gentleman's club from being our five oh one C three, because it's obviously a sham.
So they would be applying, applying as a for-profit business rather than having to, but it doesn't change anything the way Greenwood handles alcohol currently?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't have one.
Just, what's the taxes you have? Then what about the fifteen hundred dollars, is that still legit, or is that a problem with the state law, or is that just something we do?
That's us doing it in excess of what the state wants, what the minimum the state is required, which is, which is our prerogative.
Well, but what we mainly did with this was correct the percentages of tax collected, right?
We were definitely, uh.
On the supplement of veteran tax.
First time, originally, more, because we ran in compliance with the state, with the taxes.
When I, when I presented that. That David Chong wrote, I just, the municipally wrote that title.
I thought maybe Mike even did it, I thought.
No, the municipally wrote.
And that's what they.
Yes, uh, not David Chong, who was the one that started the municipally?
Don Zimmerman? Don Zimmerman? Well, he didn't start it, but she was there.
The one before that.
Before Don Zimmerman?
Yeah, he's older, he's dead.
That's Don.
That's Don?
Yeah.
Don Zimmerman wrote.
Because Mark Hayes is the director now, but it was.
Yes, okay, I was getting those two confused.
Yeah, it was Don Zimmerman.
I was going to say, whoever it was.
Don Zimmerman wrote.
So Charlotte, if somebody's wanting to come get one of these applications, which is now exhibit A, did they come in here to go to you?
Yes.
Okay. I was asked right before I got here, and I told them, come see you tomorrow.
They come in and, yeah, I'll go through with them and I give them a copy of this ordinance so they know all the instructions, and, I mean, should all be there, but I'm.
Okay.
Able to answer whatever questions and.
I don't need to start something that's not started, but is there a question from someone out there about the fee being different for a nonprofit? Am I, other guys?
No, this person didn't even know this even existed.
Okay.
Us, they were grabbing, might not have been able to have a private club, and I said, well, you certainly can, it's been on the books for ten years.
Okay.
The change in the, in the taxation.
Right, that's what I told them.
Oh. Now, where did that come from? You, you've just poured through state law and found out that we were too excessive by law, is that right?
Actually, we were in, we were in review, uh, what were we looking at?
In the certification committee and, and AI.
Committee, we caught it in there.
So Don Zimmerman was wrong.
Somebody over there, maybe somebody has clerks that.
Or it's changed, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and it's been years ago, so it's changed, he was either wrong or it's changed. He wrote it.
I would be reluctant to say that Don Zimmerman was wrong.
So it must have changed. Okay.
That's mine. On the exhibit A, uh, where it says annual permit renewal cost fifteen hundred dollars, and it says initial permit if applied for by July. And it says initial permit if applied for by July first, seven fifty, should that be after July first?
No, I was just looking at that and, and wondering why it's like that, um, we've talked about this before, though. There's something in state law about the costs. It's about, it's on this exhibit A on check, page eight. Um, up at the very top, you can see.
Oh.
That's our cost of, of this thing. You would think so that it would be cheaper in the latter half of the year, which is what you're pointing out, Mr. Brown, right? Like if somebody come in in August, it should be cut out.
Right, that's what I'm saying, like, like half a year, prorated. Yeah, prorated.
I would even think it should be prorated to month to month.
We need to look into that, I don't know if it's correct or not correct.
Well, that was the whole reason, because those, I think the last people tried to, came in afterwards and didn't seem fair to pay the full years of, of the initial year. Now, when January one gets here, you owe fifteen hundred.
It's something in the state's law.
They paid that at that time.
Yeah, I know.
We've since refunded that so they can start over and not, we don't need to be holding their.
No.
Their check. I make a motion that we adopt this resolution on the second reading, uh, with the clarification on exhibit A about the seven fifty versus fifteen hundred.
But it's, it's an ordinance.
Put it on second reading by title only with that.
Of it, ordinance, excuse me, yes.
Second.
Pending that, exhibit A.
Wait a second. Yes, sir, second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meeker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
It's unanimous, an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number twenty-three dash seventeen, establishing a permitting process and privileged permit for selling or dispensing any controlled beverage within a private club within the city of Greenwood by businesses licensed by the state as a private club to sell alcoholic beverages. Levying permit fees and a cit- city supplemental tax of five percent of beer, wine, and seven percent of mixed drinks upon the annual gross receipts which are derived therefrom. Repealing any ordinance in conflict herewith, therewith, establishing penalties for the violation of these provisions and for other purposes. It is read.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, uh. Moving on to number three under new business, I got a little carried away ahead of myself on this one. I'm gonna pull this or table this for a while, meaning, uh, the celebration is not until next year. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we get our ducks in a row on this, uh, with cooperation, historical societies already on, on board with us. The chamber, of course, and the city of Greenwood will all get together and plan a big shindig. Uh, this, the date of our one hundred and seventy-five years is March the tenth. We will celebrate more than likely on the seventh, cause that's a Saturday, is that right, Bob? So I'm gonna table it for now.
You want to just withdraw it?
Yeah, we'll draw, if that's okay with council, I'm gonna withdraw it and we'll talk about it in a couple of months or so, so plenty of time to do. And as you know, so we're hit, so Greenwood's celebrating one hundred and seventy-five years next year and the, the country is celebrating two fifty, so we don't wanna. Okay, cool, so we'll table, or remove it and we'll go on and get ready to plan our celebration.
Well, was it March what?
Uh, well, it's the date that we, or officially one seventy-five is the tenth, but we'll celebrate on the seventh. On, so, on the side of that. Or that's the plan thus far.
I'll find out when my daughter's wedding is.
Oh.
We will adjust.
Okay, we'll adjust. Tell your daughter she may make a difference in our one hundred and seventy-five year, depending on when she wants to get married. Or we can celebrate the day of the, the wedding, that'd be awesome.
We just have her wedding at the.
At, at the celebration.
Yeah. That's a lot, that'd be a lot cheaper.
I know there's already things being planned, reenactments and things like that, so.
Thank you.
We'll make a big deal. Uh, number four, finance director, twenty twenty-four legislative audit report, Tom promised us this morning, these are both thirty-second reports, is that what you said? Thirty-minute report, that's what you said.
Yeah, more like forty-five now.
Okay, okay.
Sit back, relax and enjoy this riveting presentation you've all been waiting for. It is the results of the twenty twenty-four audit. You are gonna get both of them, both the water sewer audit report and the legislative audit tonight. I'm gonna just hit the highlights on it, I believe on your tablets you actually have the audit report, I gave you some additional, uh, papers that were loose on your, at your place that was pertaining to the water sewer audit, we'll get to that next. So if you just put that aside, those are the reports that don't go with the actual submitted audit. Uh, they are management letters and management information only, and they're not normally for general distribution, that's why they're separate. So the first thing I wanted to do is I'm gonna give, I'm gonna move this over because I'm not looking at what you're not looking at. There we go. And then we make it from the game. All right, so I'm just gonna highlight a few things from the audit reports, if you have a question when you go through and peruse those, uh, on a night when you can't sleep. Um, and you really have nothing else to do, go through that audit report with a fine tooth comb. Some of the things that you come up with that are questions that, uh, I can most likely give you some answer for. Please feel free to give me a call or come by the office, that would be fine. Uh, if it's something that I need to get some further explanation on as far as what was entailed in the actual work paper document from the auditor themselves, I can do that as well. So if there's any additional information from what is not presented here, but I'm gonna try to give you the things that I think are more germane and important for you to hear and see from the twenty twenty-four audit, for legislative audit. I will tell you that this year, we had asked them for the last four or five years to accelerate when they come to the city to do the audit. In the past, we were getting pushed way back in the year, so for instance, the twenty-three audit wasn't even started until September of twenty-four. And it didn't end until December eighteenth, when we finally got the report. So we're, we asked them if they could maybe put us in the first or second quarter of the year, and they did, they accommodated us in twenty-five. So the twenty-fives, um, report was issued in August and, um, or at least we got the wrap up in Au- in August. And the final report just came to us, we are required to present it to the council at the very next city council meeting from when the report was issued. So that's why you're getting it now. Um, so this would be the first thing I wanted to point out, it was an unmodified opinion as we've had consistently year after year. Uh, there, we, the statements that were prepared and the information that we provided to them represents fairly and all material respects the regulatory financial position of the general fund, street fund and other funds in the aggregate of the city of Greenwood. Key is I'm not mentioning water sewer, because they do not audit that. The responsibilities of management in the financial statements, we're responsible to present, for the preparation rather, and fair presentation of the financial statements. And in preparing the financial statement, management, that would be us, required to evaluate whether there are conditions or events considered in the aggregate that raise substantial doubt about the city's ability to continue as a going concern, they do audit that. They do ask every single one of us in, in the positions of management or leadership, including the mayor and sec- the, um, uh, Charlotte and myself, whether we have some going concern issues for the year and or there, shortly thereafter. And one of the things they look at is trends, and I've been showing you some of the negative trends, so they're gonna be looking at that a little more closely in the future to see what our, uh, response to those negative trends are, as I just pointed out in our financials. So that's one of the things I wanted to point out. As far as internal control, they report on the internal controls and they give you, uh, definition of deficiency. Well, our consideration of internal controls was limited purpose, that was described, it says, given these limitations during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses. So that's actually fairly decent as far as the report is concerned, because they do point out some weaknesses, but we have mitigating controls. So they, they allow that as long as they understand that we're a, kind of a lean and mean machine when it comes to some of the financial aspects in, in our departments. So they understand that, uh, utopia segregation of duties is not necessarily something that we could achieve. And then we have to work around with mitigating factors. As far as the, uh, this is a report that comes out, this was twenty twenty-three's report, and the reason I'm showing you this is because of, there was an audit finding, that was a supplemental finding in twenty twenty-three's fiscal year-end report that's, was involving the mayor's office and it said the city did not solicit bids for the purchase of a Parks Department truck in the amount of forty thousand nine eighty in non-compliance with Arkansas Code fourteen fifty-eight three oh three. Well, there was a reason for that, there was a miscommunication and misunderstanding regarding the Parks Department at that time and whether the, uh, purchase was made from what they considered to be a, um, of car dealership that won the, the contract and had accepted or won the bid, and or whether they could, um, honor or buy that truck. Bottom line is there was some, there was some circumstances that caused that to only be a supplemental. The purchase of the vehicle was in line with what the state bid was, but the actual vehicle wasn't the vehicle that was under the state bid. So that's why it was supplemental. Now, I just told you that the audit for twenty-three, if you look down at the very bottom, that's why I put this on the screen. This didn't come to us as a finding until December of two thousand twenty-four. In two thousand twenty-four's audit, however, there's a management letter and in the management letter you'll see another mayor, uh, finding, this is a reportable. And it says the city did not solicit bids for the purchase of a street department truck in the amount of sixty-one thousand in non-compliance with Arkansas Code. A similar finding was noted in the prior report, kind of implying as though we thumbed our nose at the initial finding of the previous year. However, the purchase of the street department, ooh, what happened there? The purchase of the street department truck was purchased February of two thousand twenty-four. The audit didn't even start until May and that tw- that two thousand twenty-four, uh, February, May of this year is when our audit for twenty-four started. That purchase occurred before we even knew about the twenty-three issue. So we, there's no way that we could have fixed that by the time the audit came in and did their audit. I'm, I'm surprised that that didn't get caught in a supplemental or a subsequent event review. Um, it did not, and so it's not that we ignored the response that we did to the twenty-three audit. It's that we didn't know about this and it already occurred until now, but we have put procedures in place to eliminate that from happening in the future, and you guys are well aware of that, so, uh, that'll be the, one of the responses that will be given to, uh, Little Rock.
What, why, what are the procedures that we put into place?
I, I'll, I can share that with you, I don't have that, um, response, but we presented our responses to that finding, to the, um, audit, uh, senior, I think her name was, uh, the one that's in charge, the manager on the audit, she was here to actually present that finding and we have to respond immediately. We get about a week in order from when we get the actual findings to give the response, and they were satisfied with that, I'll, I'll, I'll send you a copy of that.
Hey, Tom, but we did budget for that truck.
Yes, you did, it has nothing to do with whether it was budgeted, it has to do whether you bid it out.
And to answer, respond to your, your question, Mr. Brown, one of the, not that what you got written down, but a, one of the procedures is they get reminded every single month now. That department had meetings to follow instructions and guidelines on.
Yeah.
State business.
State business procedures.
That should also be one of your first questions if it's over a certain dollar amount, is, is this required to go off for bids, and I'm hearing that a lot more now from, from you and not to accept the, well, uh, we were purchasing it from the state bid, well, prove it.
Why were these two trucks not bought off a state bid?
Um, I just told you about the parks and, and you're asking the wrong person, you need to be asking the people who did that, I'm the one that's just bearing the news.
I think what they wanted wasn't in the pool for, that the bid had available as far as.
They, they didn't win the state bid, they had it previously and, and they were following the lead of the police department who had already purchased some from a state bid for their cars from Superior up in northwest Arkansas, come to find out Red River had now won the award and that wasn't verified and that's one of the reasons why. But, um, two thousand twenty-three, we didn't even know about the two thousand twenty-three, we should have, that's an issue. But we didn't know about it as a finding until twenty-four, the end of twenty-four. July is when they purchased that truck for Parks did, February is when they purchased the street truck. July of twenty-three, February of twenty-four, the twenty-four audit didn't come to us, uh, twenty-three audit, excuse me, didn't come to us until the end of twenty-four. So the, those two had already happened, that was a, that was water under the bridge, we, we anticipated this was gonna happen and it ended up happening, so. Um, it's not like we just ignored them and we wrote a finding and it'd be different if we wrote the response in like January. And then in February, we went out and bought a truck and didn't go into the state bid, then we didn't follow our, our response, is what I'm saying.
That's just kinda what it looks like.
It does, but now when you see the timeline, you know, that's not what happened.
So both trucks were budgeted. Both trucks were not bought off state bid. They, I guess the question was they were competitively bid?
No.
They were not competitively bid.
Now, if you buy from what is legitimately the award, the state bid contract, you don't need to bid it.
So to have made that correct, they, the council would have waived competitive bidding.
That wasn't done, yeah.
And that was not done on either one.
Correct.
But the prices were similar, they weren't far apart, correct, from the state?
This one, no. The, the other one was right in line, it just wasn't the right, it has to be with no additional add-ons, it has to be the stock, whatever that bid is, it has to be the exact same make, model, gear and, and. Yeah, go right ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I did go look at similar, similar respect trucks, that exact same vehicle more or less and multiple dealers and we still received a lower price, it's just a matter of process.
Correct, that was for twenty-three. So he was in line.
Right.
And that's why it was a supplemental, it didn't go to a, a reportable. This became a reportable because it was that, a similar finding was noted in a prior report, that's why it became a reportable. So I'm just saying that technically in the twenty-three's audit, if they had audited subsequent events in February of two thousand twenty-four, both of those would have been written in the twenty-three's audit and it wasn't. It was a timing issue based on when they did the audit and what their sample selected, as far as these reviews.
Can we possibly review that process in the next meeting?
Sure.
Let's just do that.
Add it to the next agenda?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. Just to make sure we understand that process and.
Also remember that when you're looking at it in the budget and they're coming up and they're making these purchases, the onus would be on you guys, you're the last gap, last stop in making sure that that process is followed.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's in our findings, I mean, our response, so we're kind of, everybody's got a part to play in this and you're our stopgap.
I don't know of it listed in anything we have written in any policy, really, either. To require them to do something, directors, and I, you know, they don't, I don't think even get told it when they're hired, I don't know.
Oh, they get told.
Oh, when they're hired, they do?
Yes, ma'am.
So anyway, um.
The ones I've heard, but doesn't mean they follow through, but they get told.
By the way, I'm the, I'm the bearer of the bad news, I'm not the responsible guy, so.
But you, you do seem to have the answers.
This had, this has this guy's name on it.
I know.
Well, thanks.
You're welcome, I didn't say you by name.
By the way, everything is the mayor because I am responsible for all things, that's why, it, and you know it's, and not to throw me back into the bus, cause you're not. That was, that was the parks and that's the street and I get to go to Little Rock, so.
Well, I learned, I learned about that.
Right.
I understand the process.
So bottom line is it's really in terms of finances, it's immaterial.
Correct.
Correct. And, you know, so we got the truck we wanted for the price we wanted, but there's a list of the people we should buy it from and they were on the list that year, is that correct?
You don't have to buy it from the state bid board, if you approve that and he wants that Silverado truck instead of a Ford. Then you can approve that, but you have to waive the bid if you deem it necessary or do the bid.
Yep.
It's also by specific model.
Correct.
They have to win the bid for that specific model.
Yep.
And just for my sake, I don't sign checks.
Through you.
Just so you know.
For the people who do sign the checks, can we not make sure? For the people who do sign the checks, can we not make sure that policy's followed?
Well, there's no policy on that necessarily.
That's what we're working on.
Well, there is policy. There's policy from the state. That's why you gotta go explain yourself to the state Arkansas.
Yeah.
The state Arkansas says you will buy them off a pre-qualified purchase, you know, that they've done by the state if you have the budgetary. If not, you can waive competitive bidding. Now, that's in state law and that did not happen.
Correct.
So we don't need any policy restating what the state law has already said.
I concur with that.
So the sixty-one thousand dollar pickup in street department. We had talked about that in budget and we'd appropriated that money. And that truck is here today and resides in the street department and is used in what capacity?
Director's truck, isn't it?
I couldn't tell you.
It's in the street department.
Yeah. I couldn't tell you which truck.
Who's Jim?
All the gifts. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a city, it's a street truck. I'm not sure which one.
Well, maybe it'll, maybe you could load it up with the trash that we dumped out there by our neighbors out at the lake.
Okay, we're, we're, we're handling that.
Just also remember, this happened over a year and a half ago. This was not a recent purchase. This did not recently happen. That's why I was trying to give you the timeline. This is something that happened over a year and a half ago. It happened in February of twenty-four. We're now going into twenty-six. So hopefully since then, we, and I'm pretty sure we don't, we do not have any more of these issues.
Oh, yeah.
So.
We also have four check signers. I mean, myself, Tom, Tim Posey, and Casey. So, I don't know, two of them have to sign every check, so.
Well, like, I would think that the check signers ought to be partially responsible.
We look at them.
I think we all have a little, I think we all have a little.
At the time we signed the checks, the asset has already been purchased.
I don't know what is trying to point fingers at anybody in particular. We're, we're all saying this happened and we're gonna fix it. Well, I'm the last one that wants to go to Little Rock. It's not a fun trip. I've been once before in my, in my career and it's, it's not.
The key is nothing of this was intentional. This, this is not something that we thumbed our nose at. This is something that was a, an issue that has been addressed. And we're just gonna have to go explain that to them. That's what, your five minutes of fame or something?
You'll be on the next agenda.
Or out for all, they decide to keep me.
So what, it wasn't malicious. I'm not arguing with that. There may have been some slight incompetence, maybe some slight ineptness, and we've got that handled.
I think that's why, I agree with Steve to bring up, kind of, kind of discuss the policy at the next budget meeting, or a council meeting. Is that right?
The state's policy's fine.
I think just be, everybody just be refreshed on it.
Refresher.
Yeah.
Well, Steve can do that.
It'll give us something to talk about too. January's always slow.
Okay, well. That wasn't the controversial part. All right. Can we move on?
Yes.
Okay.
One other question. So. I I'm trying to figure out, I'm making sure I understand how this is working in the administration because we're talking about the administration doing this, which is the mayor. So you delegate responsibility to department heads and we're saying these are the department heads doing this, is what you're saying. They're, they're contracting on behalf of the administration, behalf of the city of Greenwood when they go to purchase one of these things. And you, you are addressing this in meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I won't say anything else.
Yes, we do.
I take responsibility if that's what you want me to say, because it is my responsibility.
Yeah, I think you have to take responsibility.
I am, and I've never not taken the responsibility.
That's your branch of government.
I understand.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the the deal is.
I think he's probably asking, is it getting written down in a personal file or something like that? I don't know how.
Is that what you're asking?
Me? No, it's just, it it's happened one year, it happened another year. I understand the little, the the several month deal. It just needs to quit happening.
That's the plan.
That's our point.
That's the plan.
Okay, good. We won't say this next year.
Yeah, I really wanna say something else, but I think I'm not going to because I don't think it's.
There you go.
You know, I would say that in the budget, when you pass it and you see a truck in there, that you should put the loan number down and put beside it what the state bid amount is and say, don't go over.
If you go back and look at the discussions during the budget study session, the, one of you, I don't know who it was, but if you go back to the minutes, you'll find it. Uh, actually said sixty-one thousand and you questioned that amount for that truck because it was a four, it was a dual and it was multiple passenger. It was a big truck. And you, you asked, is this requiring a bid? And the response was, I'm getting it off the bid board. So you were told it was a state bid and we were led to believe that, but that's not where that truck came from and they didn't even have a Silverado on it. I had lengthy discussions with the auditor on this, so um.
So was that?
There are no minutes on that, by the way. I don't do minutes on studies, but I do have the recording.
Okay, the recording.
That just makes me mad.
It was a year and a half ago. It's more, it's done.
Our duty to tell you what was going on.
I just mean to tell you because you're gonna read that.
We all make mistakes. You pointed one out to me the other day, Mr. Powell. And I, or I, you said something to me and I pointed something to you that that was a mistake and you did it anyway. Then that's all I'll say about it. You know what I'm talking about?
No, but I have made a lot of mistakes.
Well, I'll, I'm gonna leave it at that because this, this is kind of getting out of control. We, we caught it. I'm going to Little Rock. We're trying to correct it. And two trucks in, in twelve years, to be honest with you, is not too bad.
Into their budget items.
Right.
Of course, yeah.
That's how we can fix that. We'll just get all those out there.
And like was pointed out, this is not about money. This is about not following a procedure.
By hell, all.
Money with not, more money if it was not spent on things that you did not budget. We didn't budget. You, you budgeted.
Budgeted it, yeah.
So it's, it's a mistake and we're fixing it.
Okay. Okay. This is the revenue highlights from it. You can go through and actually look at each of, what I decided to do is not only give you the twenty-four's numbers that are in your actual audit that you have. But I wanted to show you the trend from twenty-one to twenty-four for some of the revenue categories that they actually track in the audit. Now, this is an actual accrued base of accounting, not our modified cash basis. So the state aid, which is your turnbacks, uh, the revenues for that went from one sixty-eight up to two hundred and ninety-six. That's a, between the twenty-year, twenty-one and twenty-four years, that's a seventy-five percent change. And the change between twenty-four and twenty-three was sixty-eight point oh two percent in the state aid. Property taxes took a little bit of a decrease from twenty-four to twenty-three. If you look at both the audited numbers from the revenues, down one point one three percent. But overall, from twenty-one to twenty-four, up nine point four five percent. As far as franchise, yes.
Do you have?
I don't know why, if that's what you're gonna ask. Is that what you were gonna ask?
Well, the twenty-three to twenty-four, the decrease. Is this on just city property taxes collected or is this a county or a state?
This is the revenue we received from the city of Greenwood from all property taxes based on these audited numbers that the auditors put together.
It's our portion from the county.
It's your portion from the county's uh tax. Delinquent real estate, delinquent um personal, uh, commercial, whatever, I don't know. But bottom line is it's the revenue we receive from property taxes collectively.
Any decrease year over year over the last ten, fifteen years, there's something super bad going on somewhere in that department. There's no possible way that property tax revenues decreased in any shape, form, or fashion.
The numbers don't lie.
Well, the numbers have lied somewhere, is what I'm saying. Some, somebody somewheres, that's where the audit needs to be. I don't know who does that one.
Well, all I know is that I didn't put these together. I'm sharing them with you.
Well, I'm just, I'll get with you. I'll, I wanna know.
This is the, well, I.
I wanna, I wanna know who's in charge to turn in those numbers because I guarantee everybody in this building can show you their property tax receipts. Heck, I got house steward right here. Went from six dollars in twenty fifteen to seventy last year.
You shouldn't be arguing with me. I'm just giving you the numbers.
I'm not arguing. I was curious if you had an idea why or.
You have an opinion and the auditors do too. These, these are the numbers that are in our audited financials. They said the property tax is six ninety-three and I'm telling you, if you go back to the twenty-three's report, it says seven oh one. If you go back to the twenty-two, it's, I have them all right here, as a matter of fact.
I'm trying to stand up for the city and say we got short change.
But it's not unprecedented either though because from twenty, uh, from twenty-one to twenty-two, it decreased. And then it jumped up in twenty-three, but then it decreased again in twenty-four. So it's happened a couple of times.
With respect to property taxes, there are, there are plenty of attorneys who are going back on large property holders and saying, you, you evaluated this property X dollars. And it's only worth this much. So there, there could have been some of that going on, but otherwise.
No, I'm not arguing. I'm just curious. I like to know who to talk to to get those numbers.
I can ask.
Yeah.
But you're gonna.
I can show you our numbers.
I'll talk to Zach. He'd like me if he was here.
Franchise fees. Well, look at this. They dropped two. They're down one point one seven percent, okay? Sales tax though, sales tax is up three point oh nine percent, uh, including a amount that, now, this is all sales taxes, not just city. It's all sales taxes combined. Uh, local permits and rental fees. Now, what's lumped into this would be the pavilion rentals too. They're in this number. So I pulled out planning just so that you can see on a cash basis what planning's permits were of these numbers and local permits and rentals. Even though they're up nine point three one percent between twenty-four and twenty-three, uh, advertising and promotion, they're down twenty-four point oh four percent between twenty-four and twenty-three. That's the audited numbers. Now, twenty-five, you just saw, it's also bad. So you're seeing a negative trend and I've been pointing that out to the AMP as well as you, uh, every month when you see the historical. So these, these numbers mean something as far as each of those individual categories. That's why I'm highlighting them so that you can start thinking of what's, what's behind that. Um, as far as the total, I didn't have time today when I was putting these together to come up with all the answers, but I can tell you that your revenue from two thousand twenty-one for these items and these items only. Six point three million to seven point five, the actual increase between the month, this to this or each year to, to the previous year was ten point eight, three point eight one and three point six. From twenty-four to twenty-one, we're up nineteen point two two percent in revenue for those items. I just wanted to highlight those for you. But now I wanna go to the general fund and I wanna show that the general fund, this is for only the general fund. And there's restricted general funds, which are obviously by ordinance or by resolution or by state law. And there's uh also unrestricted, which can be used for anything and is not in essence part of a law or part of an ordinance or part of a resolution. You're looking at twenty-one to twenty-four from six point seven million to eight million. This, that would be the general fund all in. Let's extrapolate unrestricted monies from that. So of the six point seven million that's been in our general fund, we isolate out two million for unrestricted purposes in twenty-one. We revise, I revised this only for the ARPA uh incident that happened. Because in this number here in twenty-three and the number in twenty-four, they received um nine hundred and uh seventy-two thousand dollars of surplus money. That went into the unrestricted. That was generated because we used ARPA money for paying the salaries of the police department. So that money fell into the twenty-twenty-three's unrestricted. And in twenty-twenty-four, you did a resolution to restrict that money to the water sewer department at the end of twenty-four. Because they were gonna have to do some reload of the utilities for the road project. So that's coming out in twenty-five, but theoretically, it's, it should not be influencing these two months. So I revised this to exclude the nine hundred and seventy-two thousand. And that's showing you where we are right now as far as our, our unrestricted monies, because this is going to water sewer. As far as the current year though, right now, through the month of November, end of November, actually as of today, one million sixty-seven thousand is where you are in unrestricted general funds. So you've gone from two million eight to one million six, uh, sixty-seven thousand. But the budget for this year, at the end of the year, was nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand. That's, that's from your approved budget. So you're still better than your budget, but you still have a month to go. And that's on the unrestricted general funds. This is the number that I am worried about because that's our contingency threshold. And you're dropping below that. Keep that in mind when we start doing the budget reviews. Um, as far as the notes to the financials, just go through and read those. Uh, they tell you a lot and explain a lot about where a lot of these numbers come from. The cash deposits, financial institutions. The only reason I pull this up is because it talks about our collateralization of the monies that are in the bank. We're required to have it fully collateralized. We do, however, we do always get this custodial credit risk. And that's the risk that some of the investments that the bank is taking the money and investing in is in a risk uh not secured uh form. And that if that's, if secondarily, those uh investments that they're making go under, then there's a potential that our funds for those amounts of one million dollars. This one million five or one million dollars is what they're saying of our nine million or ten million. A tenth of it is at risk. Now, that's not a finding as far as they're, it's concerned. It's not a requirement that they be in uh something that doesn't possess or present a custodial secondary risk. It says down here though that we don't have a deposit policy for dealing with custodial credit risk. It's something we might wanna consider. It's pointed out every year. Um, the fact that this number is only about a tenth of what we have, that's what you're looking at potentially losing if everything goes bonkers. Still a risk. As far as the uh next one that you would be looking at would be how we invest our pension plans. And it shows on the different levels, whether we're in US government obligations, how much we're in bonds, talks about non-marketable securities, non-marketable um amount of seventy-seven thousand. That has to do with our loans, that we now allow them to take fifty percent of their vested amount. They can actually get a loan and they're paying themselves back the interest. The reason that we make sure it doesn't impact their corpus amount is because they're only allowed to take fifty percent of their vested amount, which is theirs. As far as stocks, mutual funds and fixed, that's where we have the bulk of what we have in our corpus. There's two million dollars in our corpus right now. As far as our limit, debt limit, this is something else I point out. It does talk about there's no property tax secured bonded debt. So we're, we've got all twenty-eight million. Don't get any thoughts or ideas. Uh, that's our bonded amount that you could, basically that's your ceiling, your li- debt limit. On the short-term financing obligations, we are borrowing against that. We have eight hundred and eighty-two thousand as of December of twenty-four. Leaving a debt margin of six million three on a seven point two million dollar. And that is the uh short-term financing equal to five percent of the assessed value of taxable property. So um that's only about twelve percent, just so you know. Yes.
That eighty-eighty-two, that's splash pad and fire truck?
Need, you asked that question. Look right up on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Long-term liabilities, direct borrowings. It's both the financing for the fire truck, you know, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand three, uh, seven hundred and thirteen dollars on it. That's actually paid off August of next year. So your truck will be fully paid off at that point. And as far as the splash pad, don't get any ideas, Stuart.
Just in time to my new one.
Too late. You already did. Um, I, I have the number of the spl- the splash pad is paid off, supposed to be. It goes through June of twenty-nine. But because there is additional paid-in capital of twenty thousand a year, uh, given to us or granted to us by a grant from the AMP Commission. For that amount of money is going to help pay off the backend. So this will pay off sometime in twenty-eight, not in twenty-nine. So you're saving about a hundred thousand dollars worth of interest due to the AMP.
Could you go back a couple of slides to the uh, yes, is this the retire?
Yes.
You talked about borrowing from their own retirement. What if the employee gets let go or?
They have an option to pay off their balance directly, so it doesn't impact it. In other words, put it back. Um, so that that's whole, but that's their money. If they choose to default on that, they get a ten ninety-nine R and they get. on that, they get a ten ninety-nine R, and they get the early withdrawal penalty. Yes. So it's significant.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but that's how it breaks down. You'll, you notice up here at the top, that's the refunding of the, uh, that's the road. Notice the water bond is not in there, because it's the water. As far as the, uh, local lot fee is concerned, that we're talking about retirements, good note to look at. The city's contribution to the plan is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's not a, a cheap endeavor there. Um, the amount of insurance that's paid by the state to help defray the cost lasted in twenty-twenty-four was a hundred and forty-two thousand more. That's, um, if they stop doing this, uh, insurance tax paid, if they stop that, and there's nothing that says they have to continue that, if they elect the, at the state level to not fund that, that drops right into our coffers. We would have to bear that cost. Now, as far as the other retirement plans we have, the clerk treasurer retirement benefits, Will McCabe and Linda, they didn't spell Brian right, um, these are the dollar amounts that are paid as far as their benefit, and you can read about why that's having to be done. It's an elected official election that they allowed them to do. City attorney is the same way. That would be Mike Hamby, former city attorney is collecting retirement. This is the dollar amount that was paid through twenty-four. And then we have the non-uniform plan. That's the seven and a half percent for which I just mentioned. Um, you'll see down at the bottom that there was eighty-eight thousand dollars paid for city employees and eighty thousand to the water sewer. So that's the amount of money that's contributed at seven and a half percent of their salaries at the, uh, beginning of each year for the previous year. And that would be it on that. Boom, boom. Uh, there's probably a lot more in there if you go through that you might have some questions about, and I'd be more than happy to get some more detail about that, but I think the first thing I'll do on the, on the, um, revenues for taxes is I will go and pull our receipts and everything that came in for each of those years, and you can see exactly what we took in. So if, if there's an issue, I don't analyze that issue here. The issue would come from the state.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the county collector.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I wasn't pointing fingers to the local boys. Yeah.
Okay. Should we go to the next item? Might as well run right into that.
Yep.
This is the water, the water commission has been made aware of all of this report, and we have gone over this with them. So the opinion is a good, clean opinion. In my opinion, the financials present fairly in all material respects. That's called an unmodified opinion. That's good. Restricted assets and the capital assets, I just basically wanted to, uh, share with you this depreciation down here. The accumulated depreciation I showed them was thirty-nine point five percent of the total value of all the capital assets. The larger that number gets, the more, the older your assets are, and the more you really should be looking at funded depreciation, um, in order to be able to afford replacing some of your older assets. Thirty-nine point five percent, the accumulated depreciation against your, uh, tangible assets, your capital assets. That's thirty-nine percent. So the higher that number, the older your assets, because the more it's depreciated. Okay. As far as the liabilities is concerned, I think I'm looking at, uh, okay, it had to do with the, the note I wanted to talk about, it's long-term liability. That's that water bond that you have, uh, that the city has outstanding in the water department. As of twenty-four, it was one point two million. We are making, um, uh, what, right now, ninety-five thousand dollar principal payment to that fund every year. That's now going to go to, starting in twenty-six, a hundred thousand dollars. It was ninety-five for twenty-five. So that number will drop to, uh, one million one five at the end of this year, and it will start next year going down even more. As far as the operating expenses are concerned, this would be what, how profitable the collective water sewer department was, and you'll notice down at the bottom, it's showing you your revenues are four million seven, operating expenses of five million one. You realize that this does include depreciation. Depreciation is a non-cash expense. So if you were going to look at this as profitable, profitability on a cash basis, you want to remove that, and that's what we would do even for the bond covenant, which we do not have a problem with in twenty-four. So what I've done is I've taken those numbers, and I've listed them out for water and sewer. Well, I want to show you, um, well, I'll show it to you in a different manner. It's, it's this column right here combined. So when you look at the amount that was listed in twenty-four, I've taken depreciation out of these numbers, so you really were profitable collectively by a half a million dollars when you remove the non-cash expense. And compare that to the twenty-twenty-three, and you can see why a rate increase was necessary combined. Water sewer were both now dragging before. In the previous years, we were having water being profitable, and it was covering the losses of sewer. So in twenty-four, the first phase of the water rate increase went into being, and that was the amount that was indicative of the rate for usage, and that was a staggered usage. It went up based on how much you, you actually consume from water. Uh, sewer had to go up also based on that same usage prac, uh, practice for the water sale. Now, what I wanted to show you was, at the end of this, there's a page in the actual audit with, it's called supplemental information, and I actually have the auditors now break water out from sewer so that we can see what expenses and revenues are attributable to water and how profitable they are as well as sewer and combined. So that's what I've done here, is I've shared that with you, and this is what they also, in the water, uh, commission, have seen. In the twenty-four numbers to the twenty-three numbers, revenue went up twenty-eight point five one percent for water and one hundred and six percent for sewer, and that's primarily because of the situation sewer was in as far as where they hadn't had a rate increase in eleven years. They were really losing money every, every single year for at least the last seven, leading up to this rate increase, and it could no longer be covered by the water department. Salaries and wages, though, I gave you percentages. They don't do this in the actual audit, but the percentages show that the salary increase between twenty-four and twenty-three for the water department for, for year twenty-four was only four point eight five percent. When you look at salaries and wages, it was twenty-two point two six percent in the sewer department. So collectively, it was ten point five four percent increase for both. And that's the salary wages line. So if you look at these numbers and you actually put statistics to them, you could, it tells a story, and, uh, you can see where what increased, that obviously salary and wages did not even include property, I mean, uh, payroll taxes, but you can see basically what each of these material categories, uh, did between the twenty-three and twenty-four years. The audit shows you that. So water was profitable by a hundred and eighty-nine thousand when you removed depreciation, two hundred and sixty-seven for sewer, and that's where your half a million came in. In twenty-five, you're going to see that number go up significantly. It's actually tracking to be about a million right now, and that's because the fixed rate went into play in twenty-five, and that fixed rate has nothing to do with usage. It has to do with your bonds, uh, your debt service on the bond, that financing will be necessary in the upcoming years, and, um, for betterments and improvements, as well as contingencies for reserves, for, uh, disasters that would happen that they have to address, as well as for funded depreciation and CPI. So that's all built into the rate. It's not all for operating. This is interesting. If you look at the cash flow from operating activities, you see where the money flowed, the actual cash outlays were. The receive, receipts from customers were four point six million, but suppliers got two point eight of it. Payment to employees was one point one, and payments for other administrative costs was three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So it's interesting to see where your cash went. As far as the, oh, there it is. I, I didn't have it, just out of order. The water sewer audit, this is where I add back the, that's the operating loss, add back the depreciation in there was your revenue, um, your actual income, rather. And then the only thing that's not listed here as far as that phase-two fixed rate is the, um, what I call funded depreciation, or you can call it replacement reserve, either one. And then the basis of accounting, I had a little bit of a disagreement with, uh, the auditor on this, primarily because, uh, when they listed the basis of accounting, he's saying that we, uh, that we, the city of Greenwood, adopted the accrual basis of accounting whereby we record revenues as recognized when they were earned and expenses as they are incurred, not when they're paid. And we are on a modified cash basis. We are not on an accrual base. It's, it's the auditor's responsibility to take our numbers and provide, we provide him the information in order to make it an accrual-based presentation. Uh, he wrote that in there, so he didn't have to write all the, the stuff that's in the leg audit, um, report about how the state allows that to happen, and it's, it's acceptable to the state of Arkansas. The language is in the legislative one. So that's more of a convenience. We, uh, obviously, the audit that you have in front of you is an accrual-based accounting. Um, depository accounts, they're fully collateralized with securities of the bank. Our auditor for water sewer does not talk about secondary credit risk. Um, and the amounts that are over the FDIC coverage is seven point five million this year, six point five in the previous years, and they're fully collateralized. Compensated absences, we always talk about, these are the benefits that would be paid if they, if we shut down right now and had to pay out everybody what's legally owed to them. These would be comp times, vacations, sick time, anything that would be a benefit that they can keep. Um, that would amount to, from the water sewer department, a hundred and nine thousand and eighty-nine from twenty-four to twenty-three. Um, it's a current liability on the combined statements. This would be your debt, and the interest rates go from one point one five to three point five percent for the amount that was outstanding in the year twenty-twenty-four. That's that ninety-five percent current installments that we pay on the principal. And then down here is a schedule that shows how that graduates up. This twenty-thirty to twenty-thirty-four, this becomes a hundred and eighteen thousand a year for those years, and for thirty-five and thirty-six, that's a hundred and twenty thousand for the two years, uh, leading up to the actual maturity of that. These are callable now bonds, so if you wanted to pay it off, you could, but that would be a cash flow drain on you right now. And these are not, um, tax-based. These are revenue bonds. These bonds are solely paid from the revenue that's generated from the water sales, water system sales, water sewer sales. So we take the WSR's, uh, revenues and we pay that bond, uh, payment. Uh, this is a little bit more about the bond, uh, defined contribution plan. This would be the seven and a half percent. Talks about how much we contributed. You saw that number already in the, um, leg audit report. Talks about a flexible benefit, uh, plan. Um, that's basically something that we offered them for, uh, cafeteria plan of benefits that they choose to use. Uh, qualitative aspects of accounting, talks about the difficulties encountered when performing the audit, none. Talks about uncorrected misstatements, none. Disagreements with management. I did have a discussion with him on one of the deficiencies that he wrote up that, um, wasn't a significant deficiency, but I'll show it to you in a second. This restricted use says the information for this report and the one I'm going to show you next is solely for the mayor, city council, and management of the city of Greenwood, as well as the water sewer commission. It is not intended to be and should not be used by anyone other than these specified parties. So generally, that's not something that would be in the full report that we give to, like S and P. This is for management purposes only. It's something that you have to, uh.
Restricted use, that means it's not FO-able?
It actually is. I mean, even the, you'll read that same language in the, um, in the leg audit report, too, and it does say, it goes on to say, he doesn't put it in there, but it says, uh, this is public information and it's fully FO-able. So if, they would have to ask for it, is basically what that means.
We want you all to treat it like it's a secret, but it's FO-able.
Well, when we submit our reports to, like, the, um, the S and P or the people, the bond company, for instance, uh, that's, these reports are not something that we initially send to them. What you have bound, we, you don't, what you have on your tablets, that's the report that is supposed to be submitted. These are something that I gave you supplementary. That's how they're given. So he talks about material weaknesses, but I do want to talk about, he talks about segregation of duties. We have corrected this, because I now have another staff member that allows me to, uh, segregate our duties a little more responsibly, and we're getting much more productivity out of what you're seeing and what comes out of our office. We're catching a lot more, we're doing a lot more timely reconciliations of what we call the virtual accounts, which was being done maybe quarterly. Now they're being done monthly. So we're, we're on top of things more, and it's caused a lot of, uh, more efficiency in our department. But the two things that he wrote up was a transfer from city sales and use tax, city sales and use tax. The original writing that he had here led it to believe that we were overstating city sales and use tax checking account, because every month we do a transfer from city sales and use tax over to the O and M's for water and sewer to cover capital, the expenses. It's done that way because they pay all their bills from their O and M's. So we just move the money to compensate for that, um, capital expenditure, because at the end of a year, we were gone between Christmas and New Year's. Uh, the check that was done to transfer the money over from city sales and use tax wasn't made until January third, when everybody got back. And because that took place, he, we were overstating one, and we technically, we were understating twenty-four's revenue in the O and M side. Well, I pointed out to him that that fund is under the full and complete control of the water commission and the water department, and it's all part of their money. So while one hand was over, the other hand was under, collectively, it was all, it's not like that was a separate account somewhere. And so he changed the recommendation to say that it's an inter-fund transfer issue. He recommends that we try to get those done in the same month. We do, except for when there's a unforeseen anomaly. Uh, and then he says that, ooh, I keep hitting that spacebar. I guess that was the computer's way of saying, you're done. Oh, come on. Oh, we go from current slide. Okay. So what we were basically doing is, um, we're going to provide him, just like we do the legislative audit, the list of these types of anomalies, so he doesn't miss them. Now, how this was caught was he caught it in the reconciliation, the bank recs caught it, because it was an outstanding item, and that's when he called me and we discussed it, and I said, you want me to do a, an automatic reversing journal entry? And he said, no, no, I'll handle it, and then he writes it up, and I'm like, why? So that's what that means. That's what that is. It's not a big issue. This old outstanding checks, a lot of those are, uh, checks that were there from the refunds of their, uh, meter deposits, and some of them weren't even checks. They're, there's, we had to go back. They're old, and they, they were done from a previous administration, uh, a previous, previous director. And so what we found out is a lot of them were reissued. They just weren't voided out of our system, so our system is showing them as outstanding, and they're not. A lot of research had to go into that. So we're, we're addressing that.
Also, if you have checks, please cash them. If there are issues about the city, please cash them. Don't hold on to them. That will help that.
You don't want the twenty-five dollar checks that you're on the commission, then don't take them.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. It was all we expected.
It was.
All right. Uh, yes, I'd like, we need a motion to approve both of these audit reports, please.
My motion, second.
Motion, second.
Did Rod make, I mean, Ralph make that?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Frank Water?
Yeah.
Tedford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Number six is city clerk treasurer, millage rollback calculation.
All right, Tim, hold your tongue for me. So Zach Johnson was going to be here tonight, Sebastian County assessor, Phil Hill, unfortunately. We missed him. He's a great guy, and he emailed the mayor, myself, um, Tom might have been in there, you know. Uh, anyway, so he recently completed a countywide reappraisal as part of a finalization of that project. They were required by state law to perform a millage rollback calculation, which, those are required to ensure that no taxing entity's total taxable value will exceed ten percent in growth due to the reappraisal. I don't pretend to. I don't pretend to for y'all to understand all of this. It's even hard for me to grasp. I'm trying to explain it. He was supposed to be here to explain this. You know how, you, you can get ahold of me to get ahold of him if you have more questions after this. So as part of the rollback calculations, that indicated a possible need for a rollback of the current millage rate, which ours is a max of five mils. So he sent some worksheets to us that, that were utilized to calculate this. Um, and those were, those calculations were to prove whether there was an indication or not that, that this. Overage was present, uh, using their value information and worksheets provided by the Arkansas Assessment Coordination Division. The rollback test indicated a millage reduction to four point seven eight mils. So it's just under five. So. The deal is we're taxing at five mils. And the reappraised value is so great that. It's, uh, over that ten percent threshold, I'll put it. So this notification from Zach came to us to simply present the data in accordance with procedures and guidelines that they are held to. Under Arkansas law and no rollback is currently required. Only that there's an indication that it's possible to roll it back. That is up to the taxing entity, which is us. We are the taxing entity on that. Uh, he has notified all, all of the taxing entities that this exists across the board. Because of the high property values and the reappraisals and it pretty much happened to everybody here. Um, but it, we thought it best for y'all to know, the mayor, we're going to make sure that the council knew about this. Um, there's no requirement to do anything about it right now. You feel free to reach out to Zach or maybe he can come to the next council meeting. He sends his regrets that he fell ill tonight and he was, he was going to be here, but. That right there is our notification to you that this exists and it's just a little bit over. Um, the deal is, is that a taxpayer could, you know, come and say. You know, there's this law that says you can't get over ten percent profit or whatever on this tax. So. We're not doing anybody wrong, but it may need addressed.
I think I, I don't understand it. So he's wanting to take more and wanting us to take a little less. So he doesn't get in trouble for taking so much more.
It's not he taking it.
Well, that's insane.
Yeah, there's, well.
He used to take less on his end and leave us alone.
Well, that's what, we would have to reduce ours to four point seven eight. We, we can't tax at five.
Do we, do we know how much money of a decrease that is?
Well, theoretically, if you look at it this way, the ten, the ten percent growth is your cap. So if the growth is greater than ten percent, you roll back the actual millage so that you maintain that ten percent growth. That's all that this is doing. It's just keeping you at or below that law. That says you can't collect more than ten percent of a growth in the assessed value. So.
Which is good to know that's in place.
If you don't do it, what Charlotte said is true, an argument could be made that you overtax them based on that law. That's why the role, that's why the calculation.
So what Rod said is right. He's charging us more or he's making more, we're making less.
We are doing it. He.
You would be making more.
We said collect five and that puts us over the, the ten percent because of the reappraised value of all the land.
What puts us over the ten percent?
The fact that they reappraised.
There you go.
And, and now, but, but, I mean, that's probably fair market and I don't pretend to know what all's involved in that. Travis probably knows more than that.
So he reappraised, our millage is over what it should be, but our property taxes.
Are way over what it should be.
Well, but they decreased to the city.
So, do we have to take action on this tonight or can we table this until we speak with Mr. Johnson?
Are, are they, are they asking us just to roll back the millage percentage or are they talking about some type of ream? Okay.
Maybe you already factored in this for that.
That'd be like getting toothpaste back in the tube.
Yeah, no, that, that's the reason why they do the rollback, I think. It's so that you don't have to divvy it up or anything. That would be astronomically hard.
Answer would be, you just didn't reassess and leaves us all alone, right?
Well, that's for him to answer too, not me.
And his answer is I'm going to take a lot more money and then get the city to take less.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I don't look so bad.
I don't, I do not do his job. I don't, I wouldn't want to do his job.
I would wait till Mr. Johnson can be here.
I can't wait. I cannot wait.
Somebody who needs to make a motion to.
Yeah, second.
Motion, second, table.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes. Pop some popcorn. I got lots of questions.
Thirty days.
I just wish.
Yeah, it's hard to grasp.
Well, it's just the fact that you, th- these elderly folks over here bought a house in nineteen fifty-seven for eight thousand dollars. They still live in it. And then some local locals bought the property next to it, put a three hundred thousand dollar house right beside it. Now Grandma Johnson's property taxes are five thousand times more than what they should be. Because the house next to her, it's just unbelievable that the assessor has the audacity to raise her property value up. Because the next door neighbor's got a nice house. That just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. I mean. Mine are the same way, but I've looked more towards the older. It always gets, well, we're trying to upgrade these old additions in Greenwood. Well, you're upgrading the elderly people right out of their pocketbook.
Well, the good news is in Arkansas, it's sixty-five, you can have it frozen.
Yeah, well.
The bad news is we're not all sixty-five.
Getting there.
I'm there.
You're there. Roger don't care.
No, I do care because that's right, what Tim's saying. Exactly.
It's sad. No, it's sad.
Okay, we will invite Mr. Johnson back when he's feeling well and let him explain. Uh, moving on to number seven. Yep, eating calendar. Miss Derry.
Yeah, we do this every year. So unless you see something odd or out of place about these dates, which all I do is. Look at a calendar online for next year and figure out the holidays and how it all falls. So. We've got three of those budget reviews in there. You know, this is subject to change if you needed to eventually. So. If you want to just adopt it, then this is what we'll try to go by next year. If, if a holiday fell on a Monday, I moved it to the following Monday. Is that okay with everybody or would you rather have Tuesdays? The next day on a Tuesday. Seems like that's hard for some of y'all.
I think the following Monday's probably better.
Okay, that's what I did.
So, so far it looks good to me. So I'll make a motion to adopt this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, number eight is I forty-nine updates. Do you have that? Mr. Bell, you want to speak on this? I, I was unable to attend this meeting. I know they showed this at the NPO, correct?
So where are we now?
This is coming from Alma, heading south to the river.
It's through the spinach fields?
Oh, yeah.
There ain't no spinach fields. They ain't grown one blade of spinach over there in their lives. What if spinach capital?
Now they're not working, now that they're out of view.
Actually, you will see somebody working.
Yeah, they're, they're out there.
The dog.
Yeah, there was some movement. They already, there was, when you were doing the microphone.
That's where they're elevating the road. These are for drainage. They'll go underneath the road, road bed in several places. Yeah, you're getting close to the river. This is down around the gun club road. And there, there you're coming up on the river.
It's not sound boggling much.
How many miles did we just watch from Alma to the river? Rod, I'm not sure.
Two and a half, probably.
I think seven miles or something like that. Miles from Alma to the river, okay. Uh, I think it's a little bit further north of there. Now this is starting from H Street. If you go down H Street in Barley. You'll run into this where you're starting, uh, up here. Probably a quarter of a mile is where they had the, uh, groundbreaking. You're moving north now.
The second groundbreaking. The first one was right there at the end of the current, a few years back. So what's the estimated completion date?
I think three years.
Completion date to where?
To the, to the river. The bridge is something else. You know, that's, that's the big, big kicker.
It won't be far behind. There's no way, I mean, even the wisdom of the highway department is not going to do all this and let it sit there all the way across.
Exactly.
I mean, the bridge is honestly in the plans.
We went to maybe, who was there? We went to the meeting.
Like a ferry on the cross first.
Yeah.
But after they showed this, I, I thought this would be a good thing to show you guys. But like I said, there's, there's no way you can see it from any highway or anything else. You don't know where.
You know, they mentioned doing a toll and doing a two lane bridge on, initially making it a toll bridge. I voted for a little supplement thing. I got an email from a male.
And y'all got ahold of highway department and they sent us this video. But I just wanted this for your information because it's good to know that, that there is something going on over there. Yeah, they, they're keeping gun club road busy.
It's a rebate buddy there.
All of Barley getting a rebate. But that's all I had. I just wanted y'all to see that and, and, uh, know that they are, are doing this and.
It's happening. Was, I, I guess, um, uh, like Manhattan or wherever the, the, the bridge builders over here, are they the ones that kind of are going to move over there to the Arkansas bridge?
I, it seemed to me like they, they said that they were, but I'm not sure. AC, it seemed like they mentioned them in some capacity. But, uh, like I said, our highway commissioner has been behind this strongly. And, uh, we'll all get to drive across that bridge one of these days. But, uh, the NPO works, works hand in hand with the, with RDOT and, uh, uh, this was a meeting that we had. We had, uh, like our. Highway commissioner there and all the, uh, local, uh, RDOT people there. And, and they showed this video and I thought, this would be something neat to council would like to see.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Yep.
Number nine, budget extension resolution, back to Tom.
Housekeeping. Let's go over there. We all know what it's about. I mean, it's understood that this is just operations and not other new things that can be watched.
Make a motion to pass the resolution.
Take it.
Motion and a second to pass the resolution.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
Just so the audience knows, there was not much discussion because we do that every year.
Number ten is, uh, planning permit fee schedule. Hunter, you handling this one? Mr. Michaels, sorry.
Mayor, council, Ms. Derry, Mr. Plummer. Uh, I have in front of you today, uh, an ordinance repealing and replacing, uh, ordinance twenty-six dash, twenty-one dash zero six. Which was our previous fee schedule. And I've consolidated a bunch of our existing planning and building zoning fees. Updated them to match, uh, current standard pricing. And I compared all of our fees to other surrounding cities, Fort Smith, Alma, Van Buren. And then went as far as, uh, Jonesboro. They had a, they had a different take on fee schedules, which we've incorporated. In this example, a few of those, such as moving to a square footage. Price for permit fees instead of basing it on evaluation. Uh, the pricing that you will see for those square footages. Came through an analysis of all of the residential building permits that have been issued since twenty twenty-one. And then I averaged all of the fees out for building, electrical, mechanical plumbing. And then broke all of those down into what would have been a square footage price. Uh, I then decided to implement a ten percent increase. And then compared that increased price to all of the nearby cities and their average permit fees. It would put us slightly ahead. Uh, but as soon as they were to go review their fee schedules, they would implement, I'm assuming, a ten percent increase. Uh, across the board. All of the fees fitting kind of the, uh, certification committee's template moving forward. Will be in exhibits, just to make everything a little bit cleaner. Easier to read. All of our ordinances that we present from now on should be in this format with the minimum number of sections being six. Uh, you will notice in section five. That I am requesting not an emergency clause, but a waiver of the second and third reading so that. These fees will implement, become effective January one. I like to try to start everything fresh on a new year. And if you have any questions for any of the fees, I'd be happy to answer those.
Did you need to at all point out that you would like it to be read tonight and waived and?
Yeah, he just said that.
Okay, sorry.
Now, residential fees, that's just on any multifamily, regular, single family dwelling? There any difference in?
Not on the residential fees. That's just for construction purposes. There are, uh, there, it is. Broken out when you get to the third page, which are going to be all the planning, zoning subdivision fees. A large portion of, about the top half of those are new. We do not charge any fees for review of multifamily plan sets. Uh, commercial plan sets, industrial plan sets. The, I mean, someone could submit plans to us ten times and we don't charge a fee for it. That is common practice among most cities. So that, that pricing was a mixture between what was most expensive and a good middle ground between them and the, and the cheapest.
Now, that provision where it says the mayor may waive the requirement of fees as stated in the current ordinance in effect.
Yes.
Is that like that currently? Or is that something that would be new?
No, so, so there is an ordinance that authorizes the mayor to waive fees in certain circumstances for the county and then.
Not like all these.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Not all of those. I just wanted it stated in our fee because it does deal with, uh, any storm damage related permit fees. That was the revision we made at the last repeal in place.
Do you think we should clarify that? The way it reads, it reads to me like it means this, all of these things.
So it would apply if we were waiving, for example, the fees for the Sebastian County library, there would be a large portion of these fees miscellaneous through here that. So, it would apply if we were waiving, for example, the fees for the Sebastian County Library, there would be a large portion of these fees miscellaneous through here that, that would be waived.
But would that allow just anybody else though? Just because the way, because I know we've had issues before sometimes on semantics and the way these, some of this language is.
I tried to leave it vague so that it referred back to the controlling ordinance, I just wanted it stated in here so that it would refer back to that ordinance.
I thought you were repealing everything.
Not that specific, that, that, that's a whole different ordinance that controls the waiving of fees. That was standalone.
Well, and it says that these stated in the current ordinance.
But it, it feels like it's this one, when it says the current ordinance.
Yeah, we can restate that however you'd like, I was trying to get around putting specific ordinance numbers in there because then we would have to go back and change this if that ordinance were to be repealed.
In that, um,
We could use a language.
Sort of that word in, in the relative ordinances or?
Some different language in an ordinance that we reviewed earlier today.
Yeah, something that points to those and not this one, this is just all that I think needs to be there. I love the table.
I think it should be, you know, waiving the, the fees, you know, I mean, the, the mayor can waive, but per, you know, council approval, is that, or is it just, the mayor can just waive them on his own?
Whatever the, whatever he's allowed to do within that specific ordinance, we can remove it, I just wanted it in here for reference purposes, but it, it could be stricken.
It's good to clarify, I understand what's in there.
The only thing I can waive fees on currently, and I know what you're saying, it looks like it's applying to this, is tornado comes through, somebody needs to do something, I mean, that's that, I can waive that and I can waive county projects fees.
Yeah, and it's a good reminder down here in provisions, it just, yeah, it just needs a little clarification.
I mean, and if the county were to bring in a mobile food court for some unknown reason, you could technically waive the fees on that, I mean, I could apply county to almost anything that one of these fees addresses.
Hey Hunter, on the sidewalk fees, payment in lieu of, I know we've had this discussion before, but is that something we wanna? Continue to allow.
The payment in lieu of?
Yeah. I mean.
I, I've, I've had a lot of, uh, pushback on the sidewalk fee in of itself and the requirement to install it, but the payment in lieu of offers a unique ability in situations where having a sidewalk to nowhere in an area that's not desirable for us to ever have sidewalk in the future, it, it gives them the ability to, to submit a payment for that amount of sidewalk that we can place elsewhere.
I think they're so over there right now where a road by those new triplexes that just goes into a ditch and there's no way to, yeah.
Yeah, when they, when they don't feel like paying the fee, they just, they put the sidewalk in like they have to and sometimes it, it leads to nowhere.
Well, I think a, a master plan would, would help with that.
Yep.
There is, well, it's a very good language, I think, just a, what'd you say?
As stated in, uh, in the applicable ordinances.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In those applicable ordinances, whatever, just something like that, we'll work on that.
Instead of current in those applicable.
Who's that man, how's it doing? Said, who's that man, what's he doing?
I love that table, and it's so nice to have that all arranged like that for everybody's ease of location and use and understanding. I mean, I know we used to have it in list format and it didn't look like this and this is nice.
We've come a long way from fifty dollars and two dollars a lot.
Yeah, and those numbers have not changed in a very long time. You will notice on the industrial trade fees, they're set at a penny a square foot and that's typically because your industrial projects are going to have a large footprint with very little trade work. So, all of the calculations that went into this panned out, penciled out. Uh, we did add fire safety permits, so for residential, commercial sprinkler systems, we have permits for those along with, uh, new fire inspections. So, if the fire department has to go out and complete an inspection, they have a method of which to submit an invoice for payment on that as long, and, and a reinspection fee, certificate of occupancy fees, we've never charged to issue one of those, those can be onerous if you really go through everything like you're supposed to. And then some of it stays exactly the same. Demolition hasn't changed a whole lot, swoon pools haven't changed.
Did you kind of model this to see what your revenues might have looked like for this year using that one?
I have not had a chance to get around to that, I am working on that, I want to see what the budget effect is for our department, I mean, it, it, it will be increased based on the adding ten percent to our permit fees. But to what extent, I have to predict how many plan reviews we're gonna have and and I've, I've got a five-year history of our department's revenues that I'm basing a lot of our projections on, trying to be as accurate as I can.
Very good.
If you see any fees that are missing, let me know, we can get them added last minute.
Multifamily dwellings are too low, but that's all right.
Uh, Jonesboro had significant price for multifamily structures.
So, are we just repealing twenty-one dash oh six and then leaving all those others?
So, this is a unique ordinance under the fact that it is both, uh, repealing and amending, and I did make sure that that was allowable and discussed this with city attorney. We are explicitly repealing the previous ordinance that was the scheduled fees twenty-one oh six. And then we are amending
All those others?
Specific sections out of all of the other ordinances that have fee amounts listed in them.
Okay, so I'll only put repeal on twenty-one oh six in our lottery?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I don't put amended on that, I just put repeal though.
Yeah.
So, I'll leave those alone.
Any more questions?
Any discussion, you know?
Um.
Lady?
Just a little tiny, it, it says in section six that for the first city department of planning and development fee scheduled twenty twenty-five, but.
I retitled it to twenty-six.
Okay, so that needs to be twenty-six in the ordinance?
Yes, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Where's that?
My, my exhibit.
And it's just, it needs to change a year there.
My exhibit's label is our fee schedule for twenty twenty-six based on its implementation date, but I referenced it in the exhibit section as twenty twenty-five.
And then Terry, thank you.
No, that's fine. Find it all now so we don't have to change it next year.
Back to sidewalk fees?
Yes.
You, you have nothing on, I don't understand, the payment in lieu, you have nothing right there?
Twenty-five percent of what you're footing.
How do you figure that payment in lieu?
So, the payment in lieu of is actually covered in our sidewalk ordinance, which nothing is being changed in that ordinance.
So, how do you figure the cost of that?
The cost of that is figured based on a quote that I received at the time of the request for installed concrete or linear foot. And then I did make a clarification in this, uh, exhibit, because this is an issue that I've ran through several times. It's supposed to be based on your lot frontage abiding the street. However, I have a lot of individuals say, well, I'm putting driveway in twenty feet of it, are you gonna charge me for that twenty feet? So, it's the lot frontage dimension minus the width of the driveway.
Are you including grading?
That is installed, yeah, it's, that's grading formed, yeah.
I'll say plus twenty-five percent of that.
Plus twenty-five percent, that was straight out of the ordinance.
So, so they, that is they lose if they do payment in lieu?
That's right.
That's correct.
And then we probably lose because the concrete would go up more before we want to put a sidewalk there and so we end up not covering with the, but anyway.
We always lose.
Hard to keep up with the present.
Right, I know.
I'm sure Mr. Johnson's got something to do with that, do you? Zach.
So, you are looking for passage, uh, and I was, I heard you earlier, but would you?
Yes, uh.
He wanted us to, no emergency clause, but waive second, third reading so it can be adopted on January one.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion, we pass this ordinance by title, only from first reading.
Second.
Motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Terry, I mean Tedford?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Powell?
I'm not sure if you did.
It's unanimous, uh, an ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty-one dash oh six in its entirety, amending and superseding the fee provisions of ordinance numbers, zero, zero dash thirty-one, zero, three dash twenty-nine, nineteen dash zero one, twenty-two dash twelve, twenty-two dash thirty-four, twenty-three dash ten, twenty-three dash eighteen, and twenty-three dash twenty-one, and establishing a u- new unified fee schedule for the Department of Planning and Development and for other purposes.
I'm making a motion to spin the rules and waive second, third reading.
Second.
Motion second, spin rules and waive second, third. Ralph second.
Does the title need City of Greenwood in there at all, Travis? I don't know if there's like a legal reason that has to be in a title. We always have them, that.
As far as was concerned, you know, we have it in section five of the, of the document, I don't know if it needs to really be in section five or just, it just needs to.
We almost always have them in the title that, that talk about our, the city, you know, the name, it just says the planning and development, but should we put the City of Greenwood?
Section one, three. Is that, is that a sure why not?
Sure.
Does anybody want it? Does, do they care?
Do you think it needs to be?
I do.
Then I would put it, put it in there.
Okay, we'll just add it, alright. Anyways, I will vote to waive it. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Uh-huh, Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you get what you wanted down there?
Yeah, well, we didn't ever specifically say it in the motion, um, but.
With the changes that y'all requested?
Okay, you, you, you know, your emotion, your emotion.
I'll lay them in my motion to add the City of Greenwood somewhere in the title and the change of twenty-five to twenty-six.
And there's that provision down there that we need to say this.
There's a provision down there.
There's provision down there.
There we go, alright.
Not down under, but down there.
So, we need one more question?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Do you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr.?
I just didn't hear.
Mr. Hunter is very easy to work with, he's really proactive and easy to work with, I appreciate it.
Boy of the year.
I know, I'm just honestly wanting the same praise.
Brad named him this morning.
Oh, he hasn't, you haven't won it yet?
Boy Wonder?
Boy Wonder? No, Captain Diligent.
Captain Diligent, that is, that's true.
We appreciate him, he does a great job.
No, the thing is, he's just really easy to work with. He's just not full of any kind of weird, just nice, just good.
As opposed to Sonny? Is that what we're, is that what we're going with this?
Try not to.
That's exactly right.
Try not to name anybody.
Hundred percent.
Is he in the, is he thrown in the category with Zach right now or something?
Oh, wow.
Before we dismiss
We do that thing, yes, sir.
Notwithstanding the fact that I approved these minutes, I don't understand the first part of number nine finance discussion of cost of living. Yeah. Uh, I, I, I just didn't understand the first paragraph.
Where?
Nine finance discussion of cost of living. I just couldn't understand the first.
Didn't it say there may not be a cola raise in the budget?
Well, it says, Tom stated the national cola came in at two point eight percent and the living cost of Arkansas is eleven percent lower than the national average, putting Arkansas cola at two point five. He said that Fort Smith cola is thirteen percent, therefore two point four percent, and Greenwood is thirteen percent, thirteen point three percent lower than the national average, which puts it at two point four three percent. And I think Greenwood's in there twice at two different rates. Or, or.
It's not.
Well, I think he wasn't, he was very specific on the two point four three and just.
One of them's the national, one of them's Arkansas, one of them's Fort Smith, one of them's Greenwood.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's, that, okay, I got it, I got it.
Okay, you got it?
I thought we had Greenwood twice in there, but never mind. I want to sing praises to Tom, praises to Tom. He didn't even flinch.
Department reports and questions from council. Got a few here, several here. Dates.
Hey, councilwoman.
Yeah, we'll do that. Chief, you got something? You're volunteering?
Well, it's not about pickup truck.
That's good. Or you want to buy it without going through state bidder?
He always does.
I know.
No. Um, spoke with Tom a little bit today, uh, this evening about, um, our, um, we've got all the money for everything spent that we're gonna spend on the, uh, on the six by six and there's right at about eight grand left in that amount and that's right at within a hundred dollars the cost of a, uh, inflatable rescue boat that I'm putting on the budget for next year. And I was talking to Tom about it on prices and he said, why don't you just ask the council about spending that money off this year so we don't have to put it in next year's budget. Um, there is one at Granger that they ordered and put back for me, uh, because I thought we were gonna use Act eight thirty-three money for it and come and find out you can't use that for a rescue boat, you can use it for a lot of other stupid things, but you can use it for a rescue boat. Uh, but it's, uh, basically the quotation for that is eighty-six ninety-one seventy-one, uh, through Granger and that was the cheapest I could find, there was, uh, the others for the two other vendors was right at nine thousand dollars and this is the exact same boat we have, no motor or anything, it's just the actual inflatable. Uh, right now ours is staying inflated after we completely fill it up, uh, maybe two days.
Yeah.
Um, I have a feeling, I mean, if we had to use it right now and, and filled it up, I think we'd get people out, but it'd be back down and, uh, and so it's needing to be, uh, replaced. But, um, anyway, I just, it'd be something else I won't have in the budget for next year, which I don't have much in the budget for next year, but we do have, uh, funds right now in city sales and use tax that won't change how much you've already budgeted to pay for it if, uh, I should. Permission?
I do have a question. What, have we made every attempt to get it, can it be fixed? Can it be patched, can it?
We actually got ahold of the manufacturer, sent them videos and everything and, and, um, Bob Dodd did it a couple of times and then we had, um, uh, one of our other guys that used to be Coast Guard, he was like, oh, I can fix all this and we tried and tried, it, it just, it won't, it's in the seal where you fill it up in two different places.
My next question, sorry to interrupt you, would be, have you considered an aluminum boat?
Well, we've talked about that, but aluminum boat will fill up with water and flip over when you have people in it and a, this type of boat will not. Aluminum boat's good when you have maybe this much water, if the water is this high and you've got a several hundred pound person that you're rescuing.
I get that, the only, the reason I ask that is I would, I would assume by dragging that in and out of your trailer, I mean, I've never had an inflatable boat, but, uh, it's gotta be, the wear and tear on it's gotta be.
We've got a inflatable boat trailer that we purchased a couple of years ago, we got rid of that flat bottom and sold it to the, uh, the wooden trailer.
So, the one that you got on now is, is specific for that?
Yes, it's specific for the boat.
Okay, okay, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, I will tell you at some point.
And I know aluminum be more than that, I'm sure.
We're probably gonna want to get aluminum flat bottom, uh, in addition to, but right now we don't even know where we would put it, because we had that discussion, so, uh, I was talking with the officers and said, let's just replace this one since it's bad.
Brad, sorry, I'm sorry.
It's not down on the roof.
I'm sorry.
Aluminum, aluminum flat bottom for what? I mean, not swift water rescue?
No, he's talking about water rescue, like sail over it.
Just at the like, the like.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the only reason we would need it is because there are several times that we'll get called out to like Jack Nolan for a person stranded and that, that, uh, inflatable with that.
Like a couple of police officers.
Well, that, well, we've had some other things out there and so if we had had a, a flat bottom, it, you would've been able to pull the boat off the log or whatever so much easier. We're on the inflatable, you just don't have, it doesn't have the pool, it doesn't have the, the, I guess, the cut in the water or whatever it takes to do that.
Good for one thing, the other one's good for other, mostly.
Red Cross actually had us go down to Greenwood Lake one time, the only time there's been an outboard legally on that lake and, uh, we were trying to move the. And, uh, we were trying to move the solar beak or something, something down below, uh, actually the intake parts, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't do it even with that thirty-five, or that forty-five horse motor, or forty horse that we got. And I guess it had to do with just not having the stern or the stuff to, to, to keep it, it was doing this right here. And I was like, okay, it's not gonna work, we're gonna have to get somebody's bass boat down here or something to move that thing, so.
Are you requesting use money you got left over?
Requesting to use, use money that we have, uh, in the total of eight thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-one cents to, to replace our inflatable boat.
And your motor goes from that one to this one?
Yeah, it's just replacing the boat itself, it's the inflatable part. It's the exact same one.
Is that city sales and use tax restricted money only for fire?
Yes.
But money's in the budget.
The money's already in the budget, it's money I've saved from other projects.
I mean, we don't have anything in front of us for this, do we?
Well, there's, we wouldn't need it, I don't think.
You just want our blessings?
Well, it's over five thousand dollars.
I'm asking for your blessing.
So we would need a budget resolution, wouldn't we?
The only reason is because capital items you wanted to be, um, a line item, and you said you cannot use it for something else unless we re-apportion it. That was your recommendation, and you approved that. That's the reason he's coming to you instead of just saying, hey, bottom line, it's in my budget, you approved the budget, I just wanna use it, I'm just informing you, which is kinda what he was thinking, you would just say, sure, go ahead. But if you want a formal resolution, you can do a formal resolution.
I just didn't know if we needed one for the.
Well, we would, oh, cause of the over five thousand rule that we do.
Because it, this being a line item, you wouldn't need it.
Yeah, I mean, we can make one up and you can say pending that you see it, you know, it's, I don't know.
Yeah. Well.
I just like to get.
I'd like to affirm the purchase. Yeah, and it's also before the end of the year, so, cause this is one of this year's money.
So go ahead and.
Prove it pending.
Anything in a resolution that we can address, that we have a budget meeting, I'm sure coming up, we sneak something in on that?
Those are not voting, can't vote.
You can, you can schedule a special meeting, travel for it, very first, special call.
I don't want to, I've never called a special meeting, somebody can.
You don't wanna break the rules.
Don't jinx me. Yeah.
I mean, you can do it around, say what the, what the boat is and the, and not to exceed this amount of money, I mean, we can just put it in that budget resolution if you want. Yeah.
Yeah.
And you'll see it, that's, it'll be that.
Thank you.
Yes, let me follow me.
And you can vote on it.
Yeah, I would vote.
You can vote on it and you'll see it, and.
Definitely don't wanna have an extra meeting in December if you don't have to.
What was the number, eighty what?
Eighty, it's eighty-six ninety-one seventy-one.
It's coming out, city sales new sex fire.
Yeah.
And it'll be our capital.
And it's not to exceed whatever the rule was.
I'll make a motion that we pass a resolution, or approve the spending pending a revolution that we can see.
Here's the problem, we're not supposed to vote on things that are not on the agenda.
I'll make a motion we add to the agenda.
Out of twelve.
Okay, out of twelve.
And the only reason I wanna go through this is because what normally happens is we have people to see, they'll just go out and buy stuff, then come to us later and say, hey, I need to move this money over here, and they bought it two months ago. So at least we're trying to be proactive and come to us before he spends the money, he hasn't spent the money yet. Okay, yeah. A lot of times people already spent money and then they come to us wanting to change their budget, and it's like, he bought that two months ago, and then, so.
So Tim, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make it, whatever motion needs to be made, just, I'll sign it.
Alright. Alright.
Just buy the boat.
Who else? Okay.
I'll say it.
We have a motion.
I mean, it's restricted money, uh, again.
Yeah.
This isn't being special needs for the fire, they get everything they want, it's just tax dollars that they can only spend on a boat or whatever.
Is it red?
It, it is red.
Ah, that is.
Do the other ones.
Say go dog, come on through.
Yeah.
Alright, we have a motion.
Mister Brown?
Yes.
Mister Maker?
Yes.
Mister Terry?
Yes.
Mister Rainwater?
Yes.
Mister Tedford?
Yes.
Mister Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, chief. Alright, anything, council, uh, department reports, questions from you gentlemen for these guys.
I can't find it. I saw him on my email, I can't find him on this deal.
What is it?
Department reports.
Somebody? Oh, Grant, I, we should've done this earlier, and I don't, can't believe I didn't do it earlier. Casey, would you come to the front, please? I'm busting at the seam to tell you, but I'm gonna let him do it. Busting at something to tell you. I should've done this when we had a crowd.
The, me and I went to Little Rock, uh, on October thirtieth to address the state, um, the Office of Outdoor Recreation for a grant for Influent Park. And I got notice this morning that they awarded us four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
Is that for the?
Influent park.
Influent park?
Yeah.
So is that it?
That's it.
We have everything?
We'll have a, shh, a million dollar park.
Excellent.
For two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
This guy's on, he used to be a cab at two fifty max.
Is this state park grant?
Correct.
State park?
Yep.
And this takes care of the loan with Farmers Bank, essentially, and you don't really need to.
Yeah, we've got that covered.
But I mean, you don't really need that loan now, do you? You can just take the ten thousand dollars a year and.
More or less, I think that we can do some shuffling to make it a little more efficient, but we've got it sorted out.
Casey did an amazing job to this panel, they changed it a little bit. When I used to go, it was called fifteen minutes of fame, you got to stand there in a, in a very odd situation and, and, and talk to these people, not odd, but it was, it was kinda high pressure, and, and so this time they changed it, it went from, you thought it was eight minutes, and they gave him six. And, uh, and then he was in the middle of a, a point he was making, and they gave him, he got to finish his sentence. He did a great job, and that's the reason we got it, so, great job.
Very good, very good.
Now we got a rate for boy of the year.
I know.
Sign it.
Alright, anybody, anything for any of these other councils, if not, we'll, we'll go to council forum. I'm sorry, um, yes, sir.
Wait, council forum?
Yep.
Okay, uh, playing on Casey's, so the, in city and town, the Arkansas Municipal League is having a grant writing and management certification workshop on May, or March the fifth, two thousand twenty-six. Uh, I, I can't tell anybody to be there, but I wish the administration would probably have Casey go, uh, commission. I think this would be great for the city, uh, fire department, fire chief. You're going?
Yeah, they went last year.
Is this the one that's using AI? Is this, is it using AI now?
It's just, it's a grant writing workshop, and they explain all the grants that are out there, and you.
Yeah, we usually have somebody attend, but Casey might go down there and teach the thing this year.
Well, I just wish we'd have good representation down there. Uh, I would think that water commission should be sending somebody down.
So, I agree, I preach this sermon quite often, grants, 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 they get tired of hearing it, and I, I preach that sermon.
I would just like to see good representation down there.
I can't force commission though, just so you know.
Oh.
But I would encourage anybody.
And I'm not saying all the time, but a lot of times we don't meet the requirements because of our.
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, many, many grants that we don't, we're, we're.
And that's sad.
I think we're too snooty.
Never hurts to go and get the training and education and get that certification, cause they're, they're offering the certification that this year. Uh, on that, you know, I read it through the Arkansas Municipal League, city and town, and I didn't realize our commissions do not get that city and town.
Commissioners?
Commissioners do not get that city and town. Do you get it Travis? Okay.
I think so.
I, I would like, whatever we have to do to get that sent to those commissioners, I'd like to do that.
He can hold the president. He can hold the president of the league.
He's a jerk, I've heard he's a jerk. He's full of himself. I will, I will ask about that, I'm going to Little Rock Wednesday for an executive committee meeting, I'll ask.
When you ask, Steve's not getting it.
You're not getting it?
No.
Well, you gotta be here.
Oh. And the sticker says honorable Tim Terry.
So, so the water commission and hards commission, I, I wish those commissioners could get that, whatever we have to do.
I don't think that'd be a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get them on the mailing list.
Okay.
I'll do my best. Anything else, council forum?
Thanks.
Uh.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I do have something.
Yeah.
Since, since she's waited the whole time, Stacy Smith?
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm sitting here thinking, there's probably not been a family that's done more logged service hours in Greenwood, Arkansas than that family. So Stacy, we give her an award here several years ago, cause she worked how many years over here at the, you know, you give it to her.
Several.
At the recycling center every Saturday.
Yep.
Every Saturday she, she'd sit over and read a book and unload stuff. And then Tim was always active in our scout troop, he was always the treasurer. But they had three boys that went through and, uh, Shane Smith built trail, a lot of trail, and put in benches along the, the lake, he did a great job, logged a lot of hours, and did a really good job with the trail he built. It's still there, and then Wesley built the hammock park up in Bell Park, and then Trey did the biggest bridge that'll ever be built by hand out at Greenwood Lake with those eye beams that he carried down through, they were seven hundred pounds a piece.
From the road, yeah.
All the way from the road. It inspired Mr. Ham so much, the mechanical engineer lived up on the road, that he'd come down there just in awe, all the time. Visited with Trey, talked to him, was talking to him about going into engineering, and, and he did. He went into medical engi- he, he started out mechanical, went on to medical engineering, and has graduated. He works for Sandy and Brad Johnson now, stitching up idiots like me, so, uh, but that, that, that family has ha- has to have more hours logged than any other family in Greenwood.
Thank you for all that.
Yeah. The only thing that you didn't do at recycling center was make those little videos like Jim Reynolds did.
We would need to talk about that, we, we would go out there and I think, yes, we had a good time with him.
Good. Yeah, yeah, he, he, uh, yeah. No, he did, he did get over there too, but we appreciate your service.
And what other?
Your family, yes sir.
One other thing, Tom, I, I, I'm sorry for coming off kinda curt to you. If there's any one person that does their job in Greenwood, it's you. You're very diligent at your job. Uh, you have the answers, so I'm firing the questions, and, and I'm going into this still mad over trash. So trash gets me pretty stirred up. Charlotte knows.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the culverts? No, I mean, he's talking about the trash in the house.
I, I, I think it's greater than what's implied.
By the way, I always make trash for.
I'm waiting to pass judgment.
Water mills, stain trash people. Hide the sewer water, right?
I'm going there first thing in the morning.
Go lay eyes on it.
Yep.
Make us look good.
Yeah, nine, by the way, to council, if you are in town in the morning, uh, nine? Lee Johnson will be here in the morning to answer questions that department heads and Bob, whoever, I mean, you're all invited. Uh, we, we can bombarding, kinda sorta, but he's gonna come to just answer questions that we've all kinda been making a list. So if you got any questions about anything, one of the main things we're, I invited for was the nine-one-one consolidation, uh, when they have a unfunded mandate. It's kinda hard to do something and there's no money. A- and a brief update on that, I don't know if you've been keeping up with that at all, I'm on the board, which is scary for me, I'm, I'm not sure I like to be on the board, but I am. Everything that has been voted on to put in place moving forward with that has now been voted to stop. So, the building, the, the wreck, the, uh, what's the company?
You talking about consolidating the dispatch stuff?
Yes, sir. Everything stopped because it got a little out of hand really quick. Motorola, the Motorola, all that has been stopped, we're starting over. There was plans, if you had, if you heard, there was plans, they bought the whole hog.
Yeah, right, right by the warehouse.
Into, into add to it, and it became a five million dollar building, then there was five million dollars on the Motorola side, all of that stopped, everything, so.
Well, that's good if it's gonna cost that much.
We're, we're not being fined anymore.
They're, they're gonna seek, hopefully I'm speaking correctly, Jeff's not here to, yep?
Uh, I was at the meeting also, they're, they're kinda hunting for a couple, couple of years, they asked, we do two and a half years of basically dispatch work.
PD.
To the police department.
PD, yeah.
And providing it's there, now EMS dispatch, they dispatch the paramedics, we talk to them regularly, we'll still pay for their app, but don't worry about it. Professionalism that they have with the medical side of it, but the actual pay will go out from, uh, from the unified dispatch. Now, right now their plan is the rights start happening this summer, and, uh, and the main thing is right now is the one, the rural value communication system is, or center. We're going back to also, we'll figure out what's the plan now, um, where we're gonna put a unified dispatch in the future. Well, now, that's kind of their secondary plan, they're going to just build a Fort Smith meeting, and, um, we're gonna be dispatching from there this summer. So it will be, um, basically just the whole family, that's the unified dispatch, even though all the dispatches go from there, you can get on radio, wanna talk to them, if, if someone on the medic side, we still have to go to dispatch, or we still have to go to Fort Smith D and S. And, um, and they'll say, they'll be working on what they're doing, consolidation, location, and putting it all together. So it'll be two and a half years to get all this back together.
That's the, that's the request, yeah.
Cancel everything else, there's rural roads, there's no dollars.
Yep. Going back to the drawing board.
And the computer system, they're telling everybody the CAD system, they forced it, our department, they decided not to use it, it's not made, maybe they'll put some else, that's their, they don't need it. It's not some power to look at, we have it now, first time, so we'll see what they develop in the future and what they have for.
So Stacy, if you make it to Little Rock. We're, we're upset that you take our sales tax money away from us and give it to people that buy you billboards and contractors, and we're mad that we have complicated problems and y'all are threatening to fine us, so.
Do the affected communities know yet that there's a pause of the good?
Yeah, I believe they know, because, because it became apparent, it became shockingly apparent one evening, uh, that, I don't wanna there, there's a lot of good people working on this, but it became apparent that Fort Smith city directors did not know how far this had gone. Uh, it's in the sense that I believe even they didn't know they had bought property on Borough Road, some of these things. So it stopped, and, and, uh.
Got rang in?
We got rang in, and, and, and so what, what was presented to these smaller town, I'm on the board to represent smaller communities, smaller than us, right? Our, our part in this was gonna run hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year for three years, and then back to whatever it was, sixty thousand, I don't remember what it was. That's way too much money for us, but yet we probably could've managed it. I'll use Hunning- Huntington as an example, they went from, I'm, I'm, this number is not true, but they went from a thousand dollars to sixty-five hundred. They can't, they're, they can't physically do that, they can't, they literally have no money to do that with.
That might be their entire budget.
Absolutely, and, and it was Huntington, Hartford, Mansfield, all those, we meet together with Judge Hokes, Hackett. Uh, we meet with Judge Hokes, uh, and Mark Allen once a month, or once every two months or so, and so those meetings are them going, wha- what? This can't, we can't do it, and one of the questions presented to the board from somebody, I can't remember, who asked, what are you gonna do if we can't pay for it? And it was almost alluded to that you don't have the service, and then somebody else spoke over, over that and said, oh no, you can't deny them nine-one-one service.
That's what they told us, well, we weren't gonna pay before.
Yeah, I know, so it's, it stopped, it has been halted, and I've never, I, I, I slept. Yeah, I know, so, it's, it's stopped, it has been halted and I've never, I, I, I slept better that night than I've slept in a long time, knowing that happened real quick. I don't sleep anyway, but that was better, so, that's whatever that is.
It was your military?
That was my, yeah, yeah, well, that doesn't work.
We do agree with the premise that collectively, we're all gonna work better together, instead of have all these little paradigms.
Yeah, no, nobody in any of those little communities disagree, they agree that it needs to happen, it gotta happen.
Needs to happen.
Plus, it's the law, it's a mandate, so. Anyway, there's that, uh, any other thing for coun, or council forum?
Did you say Dr. Lee's gonna be here tomorrow at nine AM?
Morning at nine AM.
Give him a hug before y'all be.
I'll give you. I do wanna, I do wanna say before you adjourn, do y'all have anything else?
Yeah, a date for the.
Oh, I'm sorry, the date.
Leave.
Give us some dates.
How about next week, either Wednesday or Thursday? Is that good for you, Tom, everybody?
I'm going to.
What about Thursday?
Wednesday.
Next Thursday, the eleventh? Okay, well.
Eleven?
So, it'll have to be that. Well, what about Tuesday the ninth, is that?
No, it's the eleventh or?
Thursday's when I think you're going to.
Let's say audit meeting's eleven, Thursday.
Did you wanna do the, the commissions first since they bargained?
Yes, parks and water sewer are both in.
Do you want a third one in there or just parks more than some of that night?
Well, water sewer's technically six budgets and parks is technically three primary and three secondary, so, we're gonna have twelve budgets, just from those.
Well, but departments, I mean, there's, there's three departments.
You gotta look at how much data are you gonna be looking at? Otherwise, you'll be here two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, we have been.
Okay, so what date are we looking at?
Is the ninth good for anybody?
Ninth doesn't look good for me.
Not, okay, well, it has to be following weekend, huh?
Sixteenth.
We already have a, a meeting on the fifteenth and the sixteenth, so.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Holika.
Yeah, so either the Wednesday, the seventeenth or no?
Same, the sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, I'm clear.
Yep, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Seventeenth, there may be, can you go on that Wednesday?
How, how many, I mean.
Planning Commission going there?
So, the fifteenth?
I'm good with the fifteenth. Mine's the fifteenth.
So, that's when we're gonna do that first one? Water sewer, parks?
Water sewer, parks.
We're having to have multiple in a week. Yeah.
Cause we're running out of days here.
Right.
Well, I mean.
You'll do another one Thursday, same week. Tuesday and Thursday?
Six o'clock.
Tuesday?
How many, what did we just put out, Tuesday?
No, Monday.
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 Monday, the fifteenth, we have water, sewer and park.
What time?
Six. Okay.
And then, I mean, if you want it. Um, the eighteenth, I mean, we could, we have that Christmas party that day.
Seventeenth.
There's a Christmas party that day?
Employee launching.
Will we be left over goodies? Yeah, let's have all the eighteenth. Eighteenth, I've worked for a living, I don't get to have all these functions.
Did y'all want that, to do that the same week then?
Every, it'll be the.
Seventeenth?
Eighteenth.
Seventeenth or?
He doesn't like Wednesdays.
If we could. Friday evening.
No. Can we do the eighteenth?
Eighteenth, I'm good.
Yeah, fifteenth to the eighteenth.
Alright. They, they can do the eighteenth if you can.
Eighteenth, okay.
Alright, so what departments would you like then? Police, fire, street?
We're doing. Me and, me, we, we, the three of us, we're fixing to.
I mean, that's two, two weeks away.
So, cops, fire and who?
We will meet prior to that.
So, police and not street?
So, we got the fifteenth and eighteenth?
Yeah.
You want police, fire and planning or police, fire and street?
It's fire and street. Eighteenth, sir. Going on, it's not all about you.
Alright, so cops, planning and who? Or scrap and fire? Animal control?
Police, police, animal control and.
Planning.
Planning. Okay.
It's, so animal control's finally got their own thing.
We let the people know.
How about the twenty-second?
Yeah, how about the twenty-second?
There is a water commission meeting that, I mean, no, there's not.
No, no water for December.
You don't?
I have it in my phone, but no.
So, we can do the twenty-second for the next one.
Eighteenth, yeah.
They don't have one in December, so you wanna do the twenty-second?
Twenty-second, I'm good.
Is that for general stuff?
It'd be fire.
But I mean, will you by then?
You will, you will, you will, she will, he will, everybody will.
Just take out all trucks, new employees and pay raises. Save us a lot of time.
Street, I've got some questions and work on, so, street and fire would be the next two.
So, let's do street and fire that, the twenty-second then.
Street and fire?
Yep.
Okay.
Six.
In general, general be January the third.
You wanna be general after Christmas?
Yeah, after Christmas.
You want the twenty-first?
What's the last date you put?
Uh, twenty-second?
December thirty-first.
I'm not doing anything, trust me.
Do you wanna try to?
How about the thirty?
I'm sure I'll get pulled over.
That's on a Tuesday.
Do you still wanna try everything in December, you wanna try to get this thing adopted before the first of next year, is that what we're trying to do?
I'm going.
Wouldn't that be great?
Oh, wait.
You wanna side bet? Side bet your first year?
It's gonna be first year.
And I want it to be so.
You wanna just wait?
January six, January the sixth for general.
You wanna just set the next meeting at the twenty-second?
Yeah, we set the sec, the generally.
I mean, on that twenty-second?
Oh, set the next one.
Do y'all wanna set the, the next meeting, so that way you'll see how far along you are with.
I say January, I say January sixth, and it's always, always gonna meet between Christmas and first.
That's the day after our council meetings?
Yeah.
We have a council meeting on the fifth, so we haven't got the sixth.
Do you want to try to go ahead and schedule that then, January the sixth?
That work with you, Tom?
For general and all?
It's probably not good for me, but it's alright, I'm.
Cause I mean.
Well, that's a.
If you go ahead and, and do the twenty-second, then you can kinda see where you're at and, I mean, it's possible that you could even.
Well, just pencil in the sixes, that way, just reserve the six, just in case, just in case.
We'll set the six in case.
We got the fifteenth, eighteenth, twenty-second and January sixth.
Yep.
Yeah, we have it here.
Yeah, alright, well, those are two hundred and we're set, so.
Maybe if we can get general done by January the sixth, I feel like we're in great shape. Everybody alright? Good. We need medical help up here.
Water sewer and parks are fifteenth, the eighteenth is police, planning and animal control, twenty-second, street and fire.
Yep.
Right.
And then we'll discuss general at the twenty-second meeting.
Unless y'all, unless we had a live agenda on the city council meeting, we'd do it that night, it's on the fifth.
There she is, everybody.
Danielle Smith.
Okay, it's it.
Is it? Alright, good on the dates?
Yes.
We'll see how it goes.
I'll make a motion with adjournment.
I wanna throw in another prayer request for Danielle's mother-in-law, who is not doing well, is in Little Rock. So, she's been battling cancer for thirty years, no, eighteen years and now not doing well, so remember her, what's her first name? Carolyn Smith. And a reminder quick, parade coming up, follow that with the trade, I'm sorry, don't forget, bean feeds at five, five-thirty. Uh, something else, a lineup at five-thirty, if you're in the parade, parade's at seven, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
You're a miracle worker, Tom, you're a miracle worker.
Tom, if I remember, we should tell these folks to have.
It said three hours.
What was he getting? About, I know she told us.